All right, good evening, everybody, again, and welcome to this meeting of the Orange County School Board. We're so pleased you could be with us tonight. Thank you for joining us here. We have invited a student to join us this evening to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance in our moment of silence, and I'm going to brag on this student a little bit more in a moment, but for now, let me invite up to the podium Okoye High School senior Victoria Jefferson to please lead us in the pledge and the moment of silence. Victoria, welcome.
Will you please stand and bow your heads for a moment of silence? Thank you. And now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Well, don't go anywhere yet, Victoria. We're going to brag on you a little bit because what you've done is very special and deserves recognition. Victoria is a state champion female weightlifter for the second consecutive year. Last year, of course, because she's a repeat champion, she was also state champion, and this year, her bench press surpassed last year's total, and she now has, hold on to your seat, folks, the national record for weightlifting in her class. Her bench press, I never feel adequate as a man when I have to talk with Victoria. Three hundred and five pounds, wow! Which is a national record. And you don't know how many female weightlifters we have out there, but the guys will know what I'm talking about. That put every guy in this room to shame, even in our prime in high school. Victoria, congratulations. And she lifted a total weight of 510 pounds, but I think as proud as we are of Victoria's prowess as a weightlifter and as an athlete, we're even prouder of how incredibly smart she is and what a terrific student she is. She has a GPA of 4.6, which I think deserves applause. Victoria began weightlifting when she was 14 years old to get ready for basketball season. Oh my God, stay out of the paint when Victoria's in the paint. And now she dedicates herself full-time to weightlifting, training five days a week year-round. Congratulations, Victoria. We're so incredibly proud of you. Thank you for being such a wonderful representative of Orange County Public Schools, and I know every member of this board up here, if you promise not to crush our hands, would like to shake your hand. This might be mom and dad pumping it up there, because, and y'all should be so incredibly proud of Victoria and the daughter you've raised, and I think I speak for all of us when I say, as impressed as we are with her academic and athletic achievements, we're also so proud of the role model she is for her fellow students. So, anybody who is this terrific a kid, has terrific parents, let me ask you to both stand so we can also recognize you for being here tonight. And are those your, are any siblings with you or relatives? Baby sister, okay, baby sister. Thank you for being here. Well, congratulations, and thank you for raising such a fine child. We have one more recognition tonight, and frankly, it's one that's a bit overdue. For the past 23 years, legendary Winter Park High School football coaches Larry Gergli and Johnny Miller have been making Christmas possible for literally thousands of children and families in the OCPS community. They organize, they organize a Coaches and Friends Toy Drive Challenge Golf Tournament every year on the Monday before Christmas. At that tournament, OCPS coaches, teachers, administrators, parents, and business partners form golf teams that are responsible for bringing unwrapped toys, gift cards, and canned goods to help support the cause. Johnny Miller, also known as Santa, is with us tonight, and Coach Miller, can you come to the podium? Where are you, so we can recognize you? And Mr. Miller, we understand that Coach Gergli couldn't be with us tonight, but we are honored that you are here to accept our appreciation on behalf of both of you. And every year, Coach Miller receives the donations the morning of the event, and then he then coordinates the drop-off and pickup of the toys, as well as the donations with local charities, which include several churches, the Beta House in Apopka, the Ronald McDonald House at O R M C, and the Orlando Rescue Mission, to name just a few. Mr. Miller, or Coach Miller, also takes note of which school brings the most toys, and the winner is given a five-foot trophy to display in their school, which I think he may have with him tonight. Coach Gergli coordinates all of the golf operations, the raffle prizes, and he works to ensure a full field of participants. And this past year, the tournament grew to the largest field of players yet with over 130 golfers, and with this large turnout, they were able to serve approximately 1,000 children across the OCPS community. After 23 years of selfless service to our community, it is a great honor to celebrate you, Coach Miller, and to also celebrate Coach Gergli, and we hope that you will convey our appreciation for all he has done for our youth along with you these last 23 years. Coach Miller, we'd love to hear a few words from you, and thank you for all you do.
Well, thank you so much, and really, it's really a neat honor, and it's a neat thing that Coach Gergli, it was really Coach Gergli's idea, and of course, as Santa, I'm all there to try to help him, but really, we have to thank the coaches of Orange County Public Schools and the students for going and doing the toy drives and bringing the toys in and stuff, and it's, it means a lot, and it's the coaches, the community, everybody giving and caring about our, you know, about our young kids, and we thank you. And I did bring the trophy. I don't know if Mr. Johns, Dusty Johns of Boone, Boone won the trophy this year along with one of our community partners that came in, and if Mr. Johns is not here tonight, I'd like to give it to, oh, there he is, Mr. Johns, if you would. And I'd also like to give a shout-out to my principal, Tim Smith, at Winter Park High School for allowing us to continue this tradition. Mr. Johns, congratulations, sir.
Let's be clear, this is not for the actual golf portion.
No, no. This is for bringing the most toys, yes, sir. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Smith, too, for all that you do for us.
Coach Miller, congratulations again. Principal, Tim, Principal Smith, can you also stand and thank you for allowing this to be done through your school, and we so appreciate everything you do at Winter Park High School as well. Everybody, Principal Tim Smith. We will. We'd love to shake your hand, and let me just say one thing. One of my favorite sayings, Coach Miller, I'm really reminded of it tonight, is, "We make a living by what we get, we make a life by what we give," and you've certainly given a tremendous amount to our community, so on behalf of Orange County Public Schools, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
We would like to shake your hand.
Well, can I say one thing? Coach Miller, Coach Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
I have something here for you when you come, come across for both you and Coach Gergli. It's one of our medallions that we have for customer service, but also Coach Miller has been a friend since my children were in middle school. Our paths first crossed at Maitland Middle School, and how many years have you been at Winter Park High School?
This is my 37th year.
And he coaches both football and girls softball, so watch out for the softball team this year.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Hello. Nice to see you.
Good to see you again.
Thank you, sir.
So, we understand, let's have them stand. Where's Mrs. Miller and your daughter? Please stand, let's recognize you. Thank you.
I do want to say, my daughter is a second-grade teacher. This is her first year at the Lardia Elementary.
Yay!
Thank you.
She works at the front office at Lake Sebilla.
Well, thank you for lending us, Coach Miller, these last 23 years, and thank you again, Coach Miller, for this wonderful project. Thirty-seven, thirty-seven, wow! And I understand you used to teach with Mrs. Gordon?
I don't tell it.
Together? And you survived? I've lasted six years.
And you're doing great.
And I'm doing okay, she tells me. So, well, thank you again. Well, let's go right into, we have some newly-appointed administrators to recognize.
Oh, no, no, no.
None tonight? Okay.
No, I got this.
Okay. We have one other very special group of individuals to recognize. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Kat Gordon, because she has really led our efforts, recognition of Black History Month every year, and we're so honored to have her do that. So, Mrs. Gordon.
All righty. This is the chairman, and to the superintendent, and my fellow colleagues and board members, and faculty and staff, we've been honoring Black History Month throughout the month of February, and you can see Chief Wilson still gets accolades year after year. We do have other people in the community, but they seem to love him so much, and so do I, because he also taught my children. The month of February is a very special month for African-Americans, and not just African-Americans, but they are finding out that African-Americans' lives matter, just like every life matters. And tonight, we have some very special young guests with us to share their great accomplishment. We have four Orange County students who won an essay oratorical contest, and they wrote their script and memorized it, and they were honored recently during an Orlando Magic game and a special dinner at the Rosen Center for their winning entries. The contest was sponsored by the Quiet Storm Foundation. I had the opportunity to honor the Quiet Storm Foundation in February during District Five Black History Month, and we were very excited because our guests came all the way from Las Vegas, Nevada. This is a nonprofit organization created by NBA player C.J. Watson and his family. We had the honor, and the students had the honor, of being with Minister Charles Watson, Sr., and Ms. Kathy Watson at this event, and her wonderful staff from Tennessee and Las Vegas and everywhere. So, our students had an opportunity to meet and greet many students. They also had an opportunity to work with the Clark County School District student winners from Becker Middle School, Kermit R. Buckle Elementary, West Prep Institute, and I, too, also had an opportunity to work with Shirley Barber, a former Clark County School Board member who helped to train me to be tough like I am. All right, okay. The foundation aims to provide educational and recreational opportunities for our youth. The organization encourages and motivates our children to read. They distribute books to children to help them to start home libraries while providing reading instruction for parents and family literacy programs. They do so much for us, from providing academic scholarships to field trips to outreach program, and they also receive additional book bags and autographed memorabilia's that they will have for the rest of their life. I had the honor of being the guest speaker this past weekend at the annuals award launching, and it was most certainly a treat. The parents, will you please stand? Grandparents, will you please stand? The administrators of Gotham Middle School, Molly Ray, Pinewood, and Pinewood, we have two from Pinewood. If you all would take a moment and stand so our board and the audience can see who you are. These are a mixture of grandparents, parents, principals, and other administrators. They have been very supportive. There's the coach, coach, raise your hand, please. All right, she's done an outstanding job in helping to coach the Pinewood students. So, now, at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Kathy Watson, C.J.'s mom, Orlando Magic parent that works extremely hard between Las Vegas, Tennessee, and Orange County, to come forward, and if you need all the names, I have them here, okay? And we're going to ask you to come forward and introduce the student winners, and we'll have an opportunity for them to recite how and why they won.
Okay. Good evening, how are everyone? I bring you greetings from Las Vegas, Nevada. Quiet Storm is a nonprofit organization that started in Las Vegas, but we go abroad with the passion and the heart to help children and families all across the world. We are co-founder, started with a, one of the co-founders of my son, C.J. Watson, and today, I just want to leave it for the kids and the children and the students to share their full accomplishments and their hard work and efforts by sharing their written essays, and they're going to do it by memory, and you, please excuse, they're going to be nervous, but they've done an awesome job this weekend. We are so, so proud of your students, and we look forward to continue to working with the Orange County Public School District. So, first, I'm going to have them, they know how, to introduce themselves and introduce the school in which they represent. Please give your attention to the students.
Hello. Hello. My name is Ormal Sakawi, and I'll be representing Gotham Middle School, and my essay was about the achievement gap. Achievement. Once you hear this word, what comes across your mind? Our American civilization is full of rich, admirable ideas of independence, freedom, equality, and achievement. As the successors of our posterity, we all yearn to achieve, making technological advances, maintaining economical welfare, and supporting educational accomplishment. These values that we all hold dear to our hearts is the reason why we advance, accomplish, and achieve. The provision of this utopia, this metropolis of love, progress, and achievement can make our world something that we could have never dreamed of in our past. However, this idea of a thriving cultivation has come to a supreme halt. The purpose? The reason? The achievement gap. This has been an issue facing students of diversity since 1964. It is a drastic difference in performance between various groups of people. It can include age, gender, and religion. Today, the achievement gap has been particularly cited between race. Racial stereotype is one of the main reasons that many African-Americans, along with other groups of people that have been targeted, have started to score so differently than their peers. To add on to the fact, the achievement gap has to do with the concept called the stereotype threat, targeting of various groups of people and judging them in a negative manner based upon stereotype. Various researchers and analysts have noticed this trend. It's immense differences in overall test scores when being compared to other groups of people that have not had to face this racial profiling. For example, meet Zion Augustini, a 15-year-old African-American boy living in Brooklyn who was interviewed by The Atlantic. He reported that he was subject to a wide spectrum of racial profiling at his school, stating, "And I quote, 'The fact is now that I'm tardy because I'm being scanned four times because of the metal in my necklace or the metal in my keys.'" He also claims that this racial targeting has negatively affected his classwork. Quote, "It does make it extremely hard to focus on the classwork. You're either sad, upset, or just emotional about what happened." End quote. A study from Northeastern University suggests that racial discrimination explains a drastic academic gap between groups of people that are prone to racial stereotype and their counterparts. This is due to stress being put on these poor individuals, affecting their overall performance in the classroom. On the other hand, even though many groups of people seem to be affected by this gap, we obviously fail to realize others who have prospered despite this time of hardship. According to the NEA, the National Educational Association, five of the highest-ranking colleges and universities, Mount Holyoke, Tomna, Smith, Wesley, and McCastler, all have a 91% graduation rate for both white and African-American individuals. Additionally, minority students in urban locations have greatly increased their overall test scores, scoring higher than their peers. In 1995, 1,474,000 African-Americans enrolled in college. Later in 2005, this number increased by 45%. They have closed the achievement gap. These influential studies prove that we can overcome any feat that has been placed in front of us, as proved by the group of individuals that have faced this racial inequality firsthand, but have proved to be strong, fighting against all injustices. How this personally relates to me, as a person who has seen inequality placed upon others, is that there has been recent religious profiling set upon my kind. As a Muslim, I have been faced with various negative stereotypes about my religion being built on terrorism and fear. These kinds of line remarks have truly broken my heart, and I believe that people should see the truth about my religion, that it is peaceful, kind, full of acceptance, and respect for others. This is what drives me to speak out, because I have seen with my own eyes inequality and discrimination set against my religion, and I cannot bear the idea of someone else being subject to such discrimination, much less a group of people. As Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, once said, "We have before us the glorious opportunity to inject a new dimension of love into the veins of our civilization." Thank you.
He was just asking about that. Are they going to adjust that for me?
Hello, I will be represent, my name is Wesley St. Juice, and I will be representing Pinewood Elementary. Black Lives Matter. Black Lives Matter for every black or colored person out there. Back in the early times, we were slaves and got beat up because of our color. Now, some people still are treating us like that. Back then, it was against the law for a person like me to speak up. People like Rosa Parks and Martin Luther King Jr. had to fight for their rights and for others as well. Black and colored people were tortured, beat down, attacked by dogs, and much worse. When there was slavery, we had to run away and hide to escape owners, or join the underground rural system to become free, but possibly leave love was behind. Many people tried to put a stop to it. Once, Abraham Lincoln and many others before him fought to finally end slavery, other issues came about. Other issues such as not being able to go to the same schools as others or use the same restrooms. Many divide what can or cannot be done from this. Black and white people could rarely be together, but things have changed since then. The world that I live in no longer have issues of open racism, although it is still alive. For example, I can go to school with people other than my own. I can enter the same entrances and even eat with people that don't look like me. I can do all things, but it saddens me to see how me and my people fight. It saddens me to see how we still face issues of racism daily, causing me and my people to fight with Black Lives Matter. I believe in any group of people. To make progress, we must unite. It annoys me that the ones with the loudest voice or the biggest fight is looked at as trying to cause separation or division among us all. Whether that's the intention or not, all lives matter and all are valuable. Black Lives Matter is not a competition of whose oppression is more important. It is not, it is not a question of whose life is more valuable. We are all human beings, and unity is the only way out of confusion. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said it best himself, "Darkness cannot drive out of darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out of hate, only love can do that. Love, loving one another regardless of skin color, is unity." Thank you.
My name is Eric Ishman. I'm representing Molly Ray Elementary School. In today's society, I have learned that many African-American males like myself all around the world are being targeted. In 2013, the movement began with someone posting a hashtag which said #BlackLivesMatter. As a young black boy growing up in a world where it has become okay to kill someone because of the color of their skin makes me think I could possibly be next. The Black Lives Matter movement has taught us to love black, live black, and buy black. As a race, we have to, as a race, we have to care about each other. As a race, we have, no, as a race, we have to love one another and come together. My name is Eric Ishman, and thank you.
Hello. Hello. Hello, my name is Daniel B. Andrew, I'll be, I am representing Power Elementary. Black Lives Matter. The Black Lives Matter movement came to light after the killings and unarmed blackmails by whites, most of whom were cops, were unpunished by the American justice system. The movement grew even bigger across the nation through social media, and Black Lives Matter was hashtagged repeatedly day after day on sites such as Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. As these crimes have continued to grow and grow in punishment, the movement has continued to go and fight for the rights, to protect us and punish those who have committed assistance and acts of violence upon our people. There are so who think that just because today in the moment, that other lives don't matter, that's not what this is about at all. Just because we're fighting for the lives of our people doesn't mean we don't care about the lives of another. Anyone fighting within the BLM movement is a waste. There are people of all walks of life that support the movement, because even they can see that these sisters' killings that gone and punished this one for anyone. In a world where we all should be created equal, blacks are still being treated and made to feel less than. Anytime blacks come together, it's a pure to fight nonviolently for things that we believe in in or are against this, that they may take upon others, though our white opinions mean nothing. These horrible deeds that have come upon, that have come upon the black community needs to be addressed to those that commit these crimes, should be, should be addressed to them, and should be punished by the justice system, and that's, and that's the state of children to protect them and make excuses for such violence. Yes, Black Lives Matter, but so do the lies of each and every other person out there. I can only fight for all lives, black lives. It is one to commit assistance and acts of violence against anyone, being worse for our lives, is being aimed at in ways. The corrupt scale has made us targets, and those who have not put an end to this, it is doing the thing to help us. So, we must come together, people, to help ourselves. To be sure that these crimes against our people are properly punished by the law, we must fight nonviolently to keep our people safe and protected. Why? Because Black Lives Matter. Thank you. I would also like to thank Ms. Watson here and Ms. Nelson, Ms. Gosh. and Ms. Nelson, Ms. Gosham, and Ms. Strange for coming out here, please. Thank you for coming out here.
Thank you guys so much.
And we thank you. We thank you for loving Orlando and sharing your son CJ Watson with us. And we thank the Quiet Storm Foundation for including the Orange County Public School in part of your legacy. We're very grateful, and we'll be watching CJ on the court. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent, and Board members and guests in the audience. Thank you, young people. You are awesome.
So we're gonna have some board member comments, but I do know that all of us would really like to shake the hands of the four young men who so ably represented their schools in this competition. So if you all could come on up front, let us shake your hands. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say how impressed I am with the students' poise and demeanor up at the podium. There is no way I could have done that when I was their age, so kudos to-- Quite impressive, but you know, it takes the strength of the individual, but also the coaching and the opportunity to do that. So for those adults who made it happen, thank you for working with them. It's a wonderful opportunity, and again, congratulations and good job.
Ms. Cobert.
So I too want to congratulate you fine young gentlemen and the examples that you are, not only for your peers, but for the adults in the room. I think this year, beyond any other year, I have grown to truly understand and appreciate Black History Month. Couple of weeks ago, I had the honor of going to listen to a panel at the League of Women Voters, and they were some of our most esteemed just pillars of our community. Senators, judges, African-American leaders, not of just their community, but of our own community. And they talked about a day when it wasn't like today, and the way they grew up and what they had to endure and go through during the time of segregation and the time of integration. And the message that came through to me loud and clear is that if it weren't for brave men and women like them, my children wouldn't be able to grow up in the society that we have today that values all people. And so you four gentlemen are carrying on a great legacy and a message that we always remember our history, we learn from our history, and we do better. So I just want to thank you for being such great examples and following in the footsteps of great Americans. And as we go forward and continue to make our country and our society better, we will be better because of young men like you. So thank you.
Ms. Gould.
I also wanted to share congratulations, but to say how proud I am of being in the room with the four of you and your parents and your coaches, because it is because of great communication and great reminders. And oh my gosh, I don't know how you all memorized all that you said. But it was absolutely moving, engaging, and messages that need to be told, and not just told here, but told to our community as a whole. And it's really a point of pride to have such great orders in our midst, and I think such great community leaders in the making. So congratulations to you all.
Mrs. Robinson.
I can't add much to what they've already said because they all did such a fabulous job, but I did just want to say the four of you are so inspiring. You've inspired me, and as adults in the room, one of the biggest fears adults have is speaking in public. So to see you be so brave and so strong and so courageous and get up there, keep that. Don't be afraid. Your words have power. They're gonna have impact, and use them for good, like you did here today in your schools and in the rest of your life. I can't wait to see where y'all end up. I was brought to tears a couple of times, so I'm gonna try not to cry now, but I'm very proud of y'all. Congratulations.
I was just glad y'all are so young and you're not running against me. You're so good. So you know, as I said earlier, whenever we have tremendous young citizens like this, it's because they have tremendous parents and family support. Can I have the parents of these young men stand up and let us recognize you, or grandparents, let us recognize you as well? And are there principals here tonight? Can I have their principals stand as well, please, and their teachers, any teachers or principals? Any teachers, thank you. And Mrs. Watson, if you will just convey to your son, thank you so much for starting this wonderful initiative, and thank you for carrying the torch on it and jutting all the way out here from Las Vegas to do this. It shows that it's really a passion of your son and of yours and his foundation, so thank you for that very, very much. And to the young men, I just want to say congratulations again. As the board said, it's very impressive what you did tonight. It's hard to get up and speak in front of a crowd of people, and your delivery was impeccable. And I just want to say, you know, I share with my own kids all the time, and your parents have probably said this to you before, you can either be part of the problem in life or you can be part of the solution. And I think it's so inspiring because you're clearly part of the what-else society today, so congratulations one more time. At this point, before we go into our regular agenda, we're gonna pause because it is a school night, and you aren't these great scholars by chance, so we're gonna pause for y'all to file out if you'd like. And as I love to say, go buy these wonderful kids some ice cream, because they deserve it tonight. So Board members, we do not have a strategic plan update tonight. Let me make a preliminary announcement before we go into our agenda. We don't have any changes to our agenda tonight, so we don't need to adopt a motion to adopt the agenda and no public hearing, so we're gonna go right into our consent agenda. But before I get any further, let me say any individual who would like to address any matter on our consent or non-consent agenda can do so by filling out a speaker card similar to this. You can obtain this speaker card from Mrs. McGill, the lady at the far-left-hand side of the dais over there. And when that agenda item comes up, I will call on you to speak. At that time, you will have three minutes to address the board, and we would ask you start with your address as well, legal requirement, before addressing the board. I always like to recognize Boy Scouts when they show up at our meetings. We do have a scout in our audience tonight. Young man in the back of the room, what troop are you from, son? And what are you working on, one of your merit badges? Okay, and what's your name? That sounds oddly familiar. This is my son Jack, and he's gonna kill me for this when I get home tonight. I will buy him ice cream. But Jack, just so you know, buddy, I have all the scouts do that. I just single you out. So thanks for coming down. He's working on his citizenship in the community merit badge tonight. And I'm very proud of him. He's a great kid. So thanks for coming tonight, Jack. All right, Board members, we are on the consent agenda tonight, and Agenda Item 4.01 is to approve and recognize March 2017 as Youth Visual and Performing Arts Month. And this morning, we had the pleasure, most of us, of going. Mrs. Gordon, you were teaching and working this morning. But to the annual Principal's Breakfast, it's a joint endeavor between us and United Arts and our corporate sponsors to recognize all of our principals. We are very, very proud that we have a thriving arts program in Orange County Public Schools. We have music and arts in all one hundred and eighty-nine of our schools, and that is not the norm throughout the nation. It's not the norm among large urban districts. And this board sustained that thanks to the support of the community and the one mill that this community stepped up to play in past to preserve our arts programs in all our schools throughout the depth of the recession. So I'd like to recognize up to the podium somebody that's very special to us, our very own Mr. Scott Evans, who heads up our arts efforts in Orange County Public Schools. Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is with great pleasure that the District Visual and Performing Arts reads to you the proclamation identifying March as Youth Visual and Performing Arts Month.
Whereas a visual and performing arts education contributes powerful educational benefits to all elementary and secondary students.
Whereas a visual and performing arts education develops students' creative problem-solving abilities deemed essential for twenty-first century success.
Whereas a visual and performing arts education teaches sensitivity to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities.
Whereas a visual and performing arts education reinforces and brings to life what students learn in other subjects.
Whereas a visual and performing arts education interrelates student learning in arts production, performance, history, culture criticism, and aesthetics.
Whereas these benefits of art education form the basis of world-class standards developed by the U.S. Department of Education and the National Endowment for the Arts, and--
Whereas our national leaders have acknowledged the necessity of including visual and performing arts experiences in all students' education.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Orange County does hereby proclaim March 2017 as Youth Visual and Performing Arts Month. Thank you.
Ms. Skittle.
As many of you know, I serve on the Florida School Music Association Board of Directors through an FSBA appointment, and we just had our board meeting yesterday. And they kept asking, "How do we do what we do with the arts?" And you know, I just told them that we as a community embrace the arts, and we as a board understand how important the arts are. And so I'm gonna make a cheap plug for all of the wonderful school programs that are gonna be going on between now and the end of the year, whether they are band, orchestra, chorus, orfensembles, you name it. They're gonna be showing their talents, and I encourage everyone to go to the front page of ocpss.net and look at the calendar of events that are coming up. And I told University High School, who Ann Kokara today won as the outstanding high school art principal, Cinderella is opening up at university in April, and you're in for a big treat if you go out and see them and support our wonderful arts programs all throughout the district.
Thank you, Ms. Skittle, for pointing that out. And you know, Mr. Evans, I want to thank you and your team, because we are one of the top performing arts districts, not just in the state of Florida, but in the entire United States of America, and that's not by accident. Dr. Jenkins, that's due to your commitment to the arts and this administration's commitment to the arts. And again, I want to thank the taxpayers, because it's thanks to the taxpayers of Orange County and the one-mill property tax that we're able to have a thriving arts program. We're extremely proud of the fact. Now, I learned this morning, and I didn't realize this was one of your initiatives, Scott, that we are moving towards with our corporate partners, making sure-- we've always had a program where every student, and I believe the sixth grade, gets to go to a performance of the-- I always get mixed up what years they go to which, but the ballet, and then we've added to that a live musical theater performance. And for years, they've gone to the Philharmonic, but we keep building on that with our corporate partners. And I learned this morning that your vision, I believe, is to have it where every school-grade year from second grade to eighth grade gets one field trip to an arts event here in this community. And when I say every grade, I mean literally, we have one hundred and eighty-nine thousand students. That means all twelve to fifteen thousand students per grade go that year. So that would not be happening without you and your team's dedication and without our corporate community's support. So thank you for your leadership on this. We really, really appreciate it, Scott. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I was actually going to mention, we are approaching the one hundred thousand mark for our students who have those wonderful opportunities, thanks to our partnership with United Arts and with our venues, Kathy Ransberger and folks over at the Dr. Phillips Center for the Performing Arts, as well as Bob Carr Auditorium. So everything from ballet to the Philharmonic to a wonderful production by the Orlando Repertory Theater exposes all of our children to those wonderful performances that they might not normally have exposure to. And so thanks to this board as well, we certainly appreciate the taxpayers, but this board has also made it a priority to protect fine arts when we had budget issues and certainly approve those expenditures that expose our children. So it is every student, we are at the ninety-seven thousand mark just about, from second grade through eighth grade. We're missing seventh grade, so if there's anyone listening who'd like to sponsor Blues, for example, our latest program is Sixth and Jazz, which is going to be a wonderful program for all of our sixth graders, seventh grade we're looking to add, and then we'll have every student, second through eighth grade. Thanks to all of our wonderful arts teachers, those who are putting on productions, getting ready for the spring productions, they put tireless hours to get those children ready. So I want to thank all of our, especially those who deal with our theater program, but all of our fine arts teachers for the great work they do on behalf of our students. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jenkins. Uh, Ms. Flynn.
Yes, this morning, I wanted to congratulate the team over there too, because they do a remarkable job. This morning, we had the annual Principal's Appreciation Breakfast, and it was honoring the arts, and three principals, elementary, middle, and high, were named as the Arts Principal of the Year. And I thought what was always interesting is it's not just schools that are in certain neighborhoods. There was a Title I, there's, you know, high school, and so that's, I think, kudos to the superintendent and the arts team that they're bringing it down to all students. And I think that's so, so important to be recognized, is that it is for all of our students. So thank you. Congratulations.
Well, again, thank you, and thank you for bringing the entire team down here. We really appreciate all that you do. Board members, Agenda Item 4.02, and you can also go out and get ice cream if you'd like. Oh, Ms. Gould, I'm sorry, did you just punch it? Ms. Gould also just punched her butt.
Well, I also want to thank Ms. Moore for being part of United Arts and chairing the committee that did that. But this morning, I wanted to piggyback on what Ms. Flynn said. The arts is vitally important to the health and well-being of our community, but when you look at job skills building, whether you want to pursue that as your profession or as your hobby, or create lifelong love of opera, as we heard from the senior vice president of Wells Fargo this morning, who grew up in the projects in the Bronx, and that brought him into arts. And I also found out that he is a fine arts gifted sketcher, I don't know, painter-schetcher, who actually, when he was in school, had a piece hanging in the Metropolitan Art in New York. So, and the chair of the United Arts is, I believe, the CFO for Massey Services. So arts touches us all and builds skills in a way nothing else can, and builds great things like great architecture, great communities, and certainly great relationships. So thank you for fostering that in the way that you do in such an amazing way, because I think a lot of our success, academic and otherwise, is due to a great foundation in arts.
And I'm gonna brag a little bit on my fellow board members. Ms. Gould worked-- Ms. Gould worked in the back-office operations of Broadway for years earlier in her career up in New York City. So she has a real commitment to the arts that's professional and not just based upon her passion for the arts. Ms. Moore, who serves as our representative on the Board of United Arts, is a concert-level, a professional concert level, I never pronounce it right, flutist. I always want to say flutist, but floutist, flute player. And so we're very, very committed as a board, and he's going to kill me for calling him out. But you may know that Disney's coming out with the big Beauty and the Beast movie, but that has nothing on the Blankner production of Beauty and the Beast. And my son is Beast in that production. So they've been hard at work rehearsing for three months. So again, Scott, thank you for your entire time, for your entire team, and...
You're so dead.
Yeah, I am so dead.
Badges, not...
Payback, paybacks...
He's thinking his badges.
Exactly. But thank you to your team again for coming down in Mass tonight, and thank you for all you do for our students and for your leading us in our commitment to the arts, Scott. Thank you. Now go buy them some ice cream.
I'd like to get more ice cream.
All right. Agenda Item 4.02 is recognition of March also as National Social Work Month. And I believe that I probably echo our entire board when I say that we can never have enough social workers, because we have 100 and, what are we up to now? 201,000 students in Orange County Public Schools? 203,000, it changes every month. We have, last year at least, we had over 6,000 students that were homeless. And to put that in perspective, that had climbed from about 3,000 students a short five years ago to over 6,000. So one group of professionals, we never have enough of, and they don't just serve our homeless, they serve many, many students from all backgrounds who are facing challenges in their life, are our school social workers. And I'm going to invite up to the podium tonight Stephen Ocasio to speak to us on behalf of our school social workers and to tell us a little bit about their great work that they do in their department. Mr. Ocasio, welcome. Evening.
Need to state my address, right?
Ah.
No? You know where I live already?
You're on our team. You don't have to do that.
Okay. Well, esteemed members of the board, it is my privilege, seriously, to share with you some of the social workers' accomplishments this year under the leadership of our director, Mr. Carl Sousa. And of course, we have Dr. Cartwright, our fearless leader, and of course, Lisa...Lisa, what's your last name? Coffee. Lisa Coffey, I'm horrible with names. Lisa Coffey, and we have an amazing team and incredible, remarkable team of committed and dedicated individuals. To date, there have been 605 students referred for evaluations by social workers this year, and 394 of those evaluations have been completed already at this time. Social workers have been involved with over 2,000 students. This year, over 3,500 direct attendance activities with students have been documented to date with an additional 406 MTSS activities. We've also implemented an attendance intervention program in the middle schools known by the acronym ASAP, which stands for Attendance Success Equals Academic Progress. And we're going to be rolling that out in its full form next year. We're excited about that. That is a systems-based approach, by the way, okay? Where we work with school and parents to identify barriers that prevent students from attending school, and then resources are provided to remove those existing barriers, okay? And we take all of the systems that are involved, family, individual, school, community, that are impacting that child. But this isn't tell the entire story, for there are exceptional acts of service that could never fully be measured by a log or statistical data sheets, such as, you know, some of the crisis interventions that we've done. For example, there was a woman who had come into one of our schools with a swollen black eye, and as a result of a social work intervention, her, along with her two precious children, were brought to a place of safety, breaking free from the tyranny of psychological abuse and oppression. And then there are those moments when we don't know if we're making a difference, such as this young kindergarten student I was involved with, who was recovering from sexual abuse and who was withdrawn and socially isolated. And one day, I was passing through the hallway and her class was walking through, and I didn't realize it. And I'm walking, and I decided to go up the stairs, I was on my way to the second floor, and all of a sudden, I couldn't make it any further because my right leg became 25-plus pounds heavier. As it turned out, there she was, when I looked down, grabbing onto my leg, holding on for dear life. For unbeknownst to me, an emotional connection had been made, one of which would eventually lead her to success with the involvement and support of family and community. And I could go on and on, but believe me when I tell you that when you honor and celebrate social workers, you honor the ones we serve. Their recovery, their lives, their hopes and their dreams, which would never, ever have been made possible without your support for social work services. For in truth, when we are there for students in time of their need, by virtue of your support, you were there also. Thank you, and God bless you.
Now, Mr. Ocasio, thank you for all you do for our students. Being a social worker, it takes heart, and nobody goes into it for the money, that's for sure. And really, you go into it because you have a passion for children, you have a passion for our community. We appreciate that. And Ms. Coffey, thank you. Mr. Sousa, thank you very much. Dr. Cartwright, thank you for your leadership of this department. And I've called on your department myself, I think every board member has up here before, and y'all are truly miracle workers. I'll just tell the audience a story. We had a young girl in our high school who my daughter knew that I heard about from my daughter and my wife, who had been displaced and was homeless and was not going to school any longer. And we didn't know exactly where she was, but we thought she was somewhere in the county. And I let the school social work department under Dr. Cartwright know of it, and they tracked her down and found her, provided her transportation, and got her back in school. And that young lady graduated, and today, I believe, she's in college. So that kid would have never come back to school were it not for your department's work. So thank you, y'all. And those stories, I think, happen every week in your department. So we really appreciate all you do. Dr. Jenkins.
I just wouldn't let, thank you, Chairman. I wouldn't let my opportunity pass to say, on behalf of the administration, thanks to all of our social workers, and thank you for your very passionate depiction of what the work is like for social workers. Very telling, very revealing, we appreciate that. Thanks to all of our social workers throughout Orange County and all the work you do for our children and their families.
Thank you again. Have a good evening. All right, board members, we're still on the consent agenda. Agenda Item 8.02, we have two speakers on that agenda item, and 8.02 is renewing the charter contract with Sunshine Charter High School. So our first speaker on that item is Heather Millet. Heather, where are you? I haven't seen you. Oh, there you are. Good to see you. If you could start with your address for the record. Okay?
I believe you all know my name. I'm Heather Millet, and I reside at 121 Cornwall Road, Winter Park, Florida. Tonight, I have three requests. I urge you to vote against the renewal of Sunshine Charter in all ALS-managed schools. I request that you discount any information presented by OCPS staff regarding the review of Sunshine Charter's metrics and operations based on information that has recently been uncovered that poses a conflict of interest. I also request that board members Christine Moore and Pam Gould recuse themselves from voting for the renewal of any ALS-managed school based on the fact that campaign donations were received from ALS, which discounts the integrity of their vote tonight. My first two requests are born from information released last week regarding Sunshine Charter, as well as other ALS Charter schools, in a USA Today investigative report. This report found that ALS charters being used as a release valve for schools in an attempt to manipulate graduation rates and test scores in an effort to gain the accountability system. Sorry, this is emotional. With that said, it would be really unfair to place all the blame on our district. I think this is a very, very good example of how our broken accountability system, pushed down by state legislators, has forced school districts to be creative with their metrics in an attempt to maximize anorexic funding that is further deteriorated by linking test scores to school grades. The consequence being that a population of students becomes sacrificial lambs in an effort to salvage the majority. Children who are not succeeding in a traditional school setting need more help, not less. They need more resources that include caring teachers who are highly trained and have credentials equivalent to teachers in their home school. They need extra counseling, both academic and perhaps even social and psychological. They also need more access to tutoring that involves a highly-trained tutor and not a computer, and perhaps even onsite CTE. But the answer is not to push these high-risk children further into the shadows. Whether intended or not, this is what is happening. For some of these children, many have witnessed adults turning their backs on them their entire lives, many who may or may not trust authority, because whether in their home life or at school, authority has failed many of them time and time again. Whether or not we are solely responsible for how these children came to this situation matters not. Regardless, we all need to be accountable for them, not just as a school or a school district, not as teachers, board members, or superintendents, but in our hearts as adults, parents, and responsible leaders of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Millet. Our next speaker is Daisy Mitchell. Ms. Mitchell, welcome.
I'm Daisy Mitchell. I'm just trying to fix the iPad. I'm Daisy Mitchell. I live in 204 Trailbridge Court, Winter Garden, Florida, 34787. May I start? Thank you, good evening. ProPublica is an independent nonprofit newsroom that produces investigative journalism in the public interest. Their work focuses exclusively on truly important stories, stories with moral force. They do this by producing journalism that shines a light on exploitations of the weak by the strong, or when an institution abuses the public's trust. They won't lobby, nor do they ally with politicians or advocacy groups. Furthermore, Heather Vogel, who co-authored the 12-page investigative report that I will refer to, was a finalist for the Goldsmith Prize for investigative reporting in 2013. The 12-page investigative report titled "Hidden Dropouts: How School Makes Low Achievers Disappear," written on February 21, 2017, sadly reminded me of Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer, the Island of Misfit Toys, of unwanted toys. All the effort to rid ourselves of academically at-risk students who jeopardize your A-rating status and interfere in your quest for national recognition, this practice is unscrupulous and deceitful due to our punitive accountability system. According to the report, 137 students assigned to Olympia instead attended Sunshine High, a charter alternative publicly-funded school run by a for-profit company. Sunshine High stands a few doors down from a tobacco shop and a liquor store in a strip mall. It offers no sports teams and few extracurricular activities. Would anyone in this room find it acceptable to send your children, especially at-risk students or economically disadvantaged students, to a school a few doors down from a tobacco shop and a liquor store? Or to a school that does not offer sports and extracurricular activities? I'm here to ask OCPS to find a viable solution and not grant Sunshine Charter High School renewal of their charter school contract. There has to be better use of the $5.4 million used by Sunshine Charter on management fees to ALS. Maybe you need to form a committee of people who genuinely care about these unwanted children. Sunshine Charter is not working, as many exit the school without a degree. Perhaps it's time to remove the GPA requirement to enroll in Orange Technical College, or add a new wing to existing high schools and offer vocational classes there. You can even provide a bus pass so students can take public transportation to the closest Orange Technical College. I just have one more sentence. The Westside Tech Campus provides a hands-on, real-world instructional setting and industry-standard equipment, which is probably the type of learning environment that these at-risk students would thrive in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. All right, our next speaker is Eric Schwalbach. Mr. Schwalbach, welcome. If you could state, start with your address, sir.
I teach, I live at 874 Bending Oak Trail, Winter Garden, Florida, 34787. Raise your hand if you've heard from me via email or in person, okay? Other people that didn't raise their hand did. So everything that you're hearing is not a surprise. You've been told from me before. As a matter of fact, I got phone calls from people going, "How did you get that information of the USA Today?" I never did. They did their own reporting, but unfortunately, it mirrored exactly what I told you. I've taught at Robinswood for the last five years. Fifty percent of the kids at Robinswood have never passed the FCAT, ever, not in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. It's not Robinswood's fault, it's the system. Fifty-seven percent had never passed the reading, okay? You guys all know this, I've told you this. The problem is, we move those kids along. I'm not blaming you guys, I'm not blaming the system. I know why laws and legislatures are created, but I also understand the unintended consequences. If we, if school wasn't for them, what did we do for them in middle school when we're cutting middle school sports and we're cutting middle school activities and we don't have budgets for this and we're not budgeted for this? But then all of a sudden, budgets go for $30,000 for each school board member to have discretionary. Then all of a sudden, we look at it and we say, "School wasn't quite working for them, so let's send them to a school that's really not going to get them the help." So I understand we need to do something with them, but what I'm just saying is Sunshine isn't right. Now, I have tons of kids that were my students that can and will talk to you personally, so I'm not just making this up and, oh, this isn't...I have real names, real people, real data that you can and you will talk to. But, you know, I just figured, hey, this is the time, if I don't speak up and say something, then it's going to be another kid, another kid, another kid, another kid. And my question is, what can we do at the middle school level to make sure those kids aren't just moved along, moved along, moved along, moved along? Fifty percent, half, had never passed the Math FCAT ever. Are we doing a great job? Do we deserve an award? Do we deserve extra bonuses? I don't know. I just think that if we have a Sunshine, that the whole reason of accountability standards are to make sure we're doing a good job, but then it can be circumvented? Because it's not just the graduation rates, the FCAT scores. Imagine taking 3,900 of our worst students and moving them off of the FCAT. They don't take the FCAT. Forget opt-out. They are opted out, and they can say whatever they want, but I know the kids, I'll tell you their names. When they turn 16, they are asked, they are given the opportunity to not go to that school anymore, okay? So I'm just saying, I want the committee, I want the committee of, what are we doing for our youth sports? And unfortunately, those young men that were standing here, they're still segregation. So we can say whatever we want, but these kids at those schools, they're mostly minorities. You know what I mean? They're kids that if I don't speak up, who's going to speak up for them? You know what I mean? I'm the guy that taught them, I'm the guy that had to stand in front of them and say... I'm the guy that taught them, I'm the guy that had to stand in front of them and say, "You're not screwing the system," because they thought they were getting ahead because they were getting moved on. But it was the system that was hurting them. So, thank you, and like I said, if you want to talk to them in person and find out really, really, ask those kids. Go to Sunshine personally and say, "Hey, how did you end up here? Did somebody encourage you to leave?"
Thank you, Ms. Schwalbach. Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. Our next speaker is Charles Jackson. Mr. Jackson, welcome.
My name is Charles Jackson. I'm a little bit nervous, and I don't have a paper to read to you, you know what I'm saying? But I live 4449 Riversdale Lane. South North Lane is not the good side of town. But I hear what they're saying about this, this, and that, but to tell me that I'm not wanted, that's not true, because I went to Sunshine. I was wanted, you know what I'm saying? Just because my regular school didn't want me, Sunshine took me in, and to have a sports program for kids that were acting up in school, sports is a privilege. So that's how I was raised. If you don't get good grades, you can't go and play sports, because you're happy, you know what I'm saying? So my little thing about Sunshine is, I worked very hard for it. I'm 23 years old right now. I did graduate from Sunshine. It was the last chance for me. I got moved on to this school, I got moved on to the next school, but I had to look within myself and have the support of special teachers and my mother and my family to, for them to see something inside of me that I didn't see for myself, because all I know is I'm going to go to the studio, I'm going to go home, and I'm going to kick it with my friends. And, yeah, they can say that's right, it's because what made me straighten up was that getting the feeling that, dang, nobody's telling me to go to class anymore, they're just saying, "Hey, listen, you can do what you want, you're going to fail." I had to look inside myself to graduate, and I'll tell you one thing, it was the biggest accomplishment of my life. And to say high school is the biggest accomplishment in my life, that's how I'm going to keep the ball rolling. Took me so hard, I didn't want to wake up, I even quit, you know what I'm saying? Was saying, "Oh, I'm going to go get my GED, I'm going to do that." My principal opened the school up on Sunday, because she told me, "I see you walking across that stage." And, like, people talking to me and telling me, "You can do it, you can do it, you can do it." I was showing up for three sessions, I had to take time off my job, I couldn't pay my car note, couldn't pay bills, I was short on rent with my mom and everything, just so I can graduate high school. Everybody I knew showed up to my graduation, just because Sunshine gave me the chance. Now, I went to Sunshine. I'll tell you who's acting up and not, they're going, whether they get more help or not, they're not going to listen to it, because it's being given to them. You got to want it, you got to work for it, so Sunshine was all right with me, and I got through it and I graduated, and I seen something in myself that I'm going to take to college and be saying the same story when I'm in college, man. I worked so hard to graduate. High school, everybody looks at, "Oh, high school, you go four years and you're going to graduate." No, I literally was two days before they were going to kick me out, because I was going to be too old to get out of school. I bought my teacher's pizza. I was so happy, you don't understand, but I worked for it. It wasn't given to me. They had a time limit, you had to be to school at this time. I was locked out of class, I was knocking on the window, and Mr. Omo let me in. Well, we're four. I said, "I guarantee you can walk in these classrooms, and you're going to see students sleep. I want that seat, and I'm going to get it, and I worked for it, and everybody showed up for my graduation. I even bought myself a class ring." So that's what I said. Sunshine worked out for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Our next speaker is Evelyn Herrera Jackson. Ms. Herrera Jackson, welcome.
I was not prepared with a speech either, but I do, my name is Evelyn Herrera Jackson. I'm Charles's mom. I live at 4449 Riversdale Lane. Certain comments that were made that these at-risk kids come from broken homes. I have a master's in education, and my husband is a retired cop. The classroom setting is not for everybody, so a Sunshine Academy setting is for those students that do not fit in a regular box. My son passed all his FCATs before he went to Sunshine. He's not, he was not a child that was not educated or did not have an appropriate upbringing. He did very well in school, but he struggled in the classroom setting, because it was not for him. Sitting in, you know, in this generation, sitting in front of the computer, he, his learning style was different. I think Sunshine Academy affords our young people that the regular classroom style does not work for them, that there's one-on-one self-teaching. Believe it or not, college is a self-teaching. You get guidance by your teacher, but you got to go home and do the homework. Charles would come home, and he would take care of his test scores, his homework. Go back to the classroom at Sunshine, he was doing more work. I will tell you, I was impressed that he took physics on the computer. I'm sure that if I took a computer class, I'm back in the day when you went to a classroom and you were taught, and you engaged, but that's not Charles. Charles was self-taught. I think he's going to do well when he goes to school in college, because he's going to be self-taught, probably do online classes and do extremely well. That's the generation of her today. And my understanding, the principal, Omo, was invested in all those kids, the teachers were invested. Yes, some of them were at risk, and they may have had some broken homes or broken family, but that does not apply to every child. I think that the teachers looked at what learning style worked best for those kids, and they catered their learning program, their educational program, to meet those kids' needs. She was able to see a light in my son that I've been telling him he had all the time. And at this point, I'm proud of who the man that he's become, and the fact that he went to school and he was employed, he was working. When school wasn't working, I said, "You got to work, you got to find some work ethics." So at a junior in high school, he was the pool activity coordinator for Grand Cypress Resort, and he was working faithfully. He was working full-time and going to Sunshine full-time. So that tells me that he has it in him, and a lot of students like him do have it. So don't dismiss our kids as unwanted, not able to do the work. You know what? Sometimes teachers lose the vision of seeing that light within every child. And if they don't see it and they don't give it, that young man that was up here saying that it was about that achievement gap, sometimes that comes from the lack of support from the educational mentors. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Herrera Jackson. I can assure you, Charles will be just fine in life, that's clear. All right, before I go on to board members to speak, that's the last of our speakers on this agenda, and I want to go to Mr. Rodriguez. There was, and I didn't, I had a couple of board members, you know, mention to me whether, you know, that was a violation of our code. I did not think it was, because it was not a personal attack, but I am going to ask Mr. Rodriguez to address the recusal comment.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, so the issue was raised as to whether or not a political contribution should count or be registered as a voting conflict pursuant to Florida statutes. Section 1123143, which deals with the voting conflicts, really only addresses those conflicts which are created because there's an actual interest in the matter that you're voting on. In layman's speak, that means that the board members would have to have a financial or some type of fiduciary interest in approving this contract with Sunshine. I find that not to be the case. In fact, the contributions from political entities or anyone else, really, those are incredibly transparent, because they're required to be disclosed to the public, they're part of the election's process, and whether you receive a contribution or not, that should not be taken to mean that the individual board members are going to vote one way or the other. So the transparency is there, it is not an application of the voting, the voting conflict provisions in Florida statute, so hopefully that answers the question, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. I'm going to address some of the comments that were made. I'm not going to take these in any particular order, going to try to close with what, to me, is the most important point, which is why I'm voting to renew this charter contract. But before I do that, let me just say, you know, when you sit up here on this board, one of the things that I try to do every board meeting and every week in this job is to figure out, okay, what's in my sandbox and what's outside of my sandbox? And what's inside my sandbox is renewing this charter or rejecting this charter, what's outside of my sandbox is the testing system that we operate under by Florida statute and also by national direction, both. We have no control over that. Our job as school board members, in my opinion, is to try to excel as best we can within the system and the constraints that we're given. And whether we like it or not, and board members have very strong opinions on everything from end-to-course testing to the over-testing of our students to FSA testing, and I think I probably speak on one topic for all our board, we all think our kids are over-tested without exception, but at the end of the day, that is how we are evaluated as a school district. So when we look at our test scores, I just feel compelled to say this, we measure ourselves against our peers. And who are our peers? Our peers are other large urban districts in this country and in the state of Florida, and all stack our test scores of our students up against any other large urban district in this state, and I think that if you look at those test scores, you will find that we excel as a large urban district. And make no mistake about it, we are a very large urban district, the tenth largest in the entire United States. I would also point out that I have toured the ALS schools, and I think most of our board members have gone through those schools. And I take a little bit of umbrage at the assertion that those schools are stacked with minorities and only minorities. That is not true, that is statistically not true. Now, what is true is that those schools do have a disproportionate number of high-poverty students. There's a big difference. Poverty doesn't know color lines. There are high-poverty white students, high-poverty black students, high-poverty Latino students, but one thing that we do know in education is there is a direct correlation, and I'm no sociologist, so I won't get off on my soapbox on this, but there is a direct correlation between test score performance and poverty. Now, that's not true of every student. You know, you have somebody like Mr. Jackson, I hope you don't mind me mentioning by name, clearly does not come from a high-poverty background, but students of all socioeconomic levels can struggle with a traditional classroom environment and a traditional testing environment. I have one student myself in my home who struggles with a traditional classroom environment. I think I probably speak for a lot of parents when I say that. Which brings me to my closing point before I turn it over to my board members, which is why I am going to vote to renew this charter. First of all, we're very hard on charters here at Orange County Public Schools. We have a reputation for being among the most exacting, stringent school boards in the entire state of Florida. We are one of the few school boards at a large urban setting that brings in every charter applicant and personally spends anywhere from 30 to 45 minutes as a board in whole. Other large urban districts don't do that. If you were ever to come to one of those meetings, you would see that we put them under a microscope, only about two or three charter applicants out of the 20 to 25 per year that apply to us, pass muster, and get voted a charter by this board. We've been challenged a number of times at the state level and in the courts for denying charters. We don't mind that, we've lost a couple of those battles in the state courts, because our attitude is, look, if a court wants to overrule us, a court can overrule us, but we take the academic welfare and the futures of our children very, very seriously, and we're very hard on charters, because we know once we grant that charter, it's very hard to unring that bell. And once we grant that charter, that charter district has that charter and can operate that school for five years, until they come up for renewal again. But let's look at Sunshine School and the other ALS schools. The average age of Sunshine School students, the average age is 17 and a half years. We're not talking about middle schoolers. We're not talking about traditional eighth or ninth or 10th graders either. We're talking about kids who are 17 and a half years of age, and the average amount of credits those students have earned by that 17 and a half years of age is 11.5 credits. Now, I've got a lot of educators in this room, but I've got quite a few non-educators in this room, and I will tell you that it requires 24 credits to graduate from high school. Most kids graduate at 17 or 18 years of age. If you're stuck at 11 and a half credits and you're 17 and a half years of age, there is a very good chance you are not going to graduate from high school. You're going to drop out, because you're not going to want to be going to school as a 19 or 20 or 21-year-old with 13, 14, and 15-year-old kids. Those are the kids that go to the ALS schools. Now, the one thing that was said in those articles that I took very, very seriously, and we will be following up on it, and I suspect the administration is always looking at it, is no child can be forced to go to an ALS school. Sunshine is an ALS school, that's the name of the operator operates those schools. But I can tell you, on my tours through those schools anecdotally, I have yet to find a single kid who says that they were forced into those schools. One of the students I spoke to last time, and this was me randomly picking out of a room full of 50 kids, and they're working on their classwork, one of those students that I picked out randomly was there because she had nursed her mother through a year and a half of cancer treatment, and her mother had finally passed away, and during that time, she had missed a ton of school and fallen two grade levels behind. By the way, this is a gifted kid, and she chose to go there because she wanted to do her credit recovery and catch up. Another kid that I spoke to there, another student, had had a baby as a teenager, and she just didn't want to go back to school. For whatever reason, she was ashamed, she was embarrassed by it, she had had a baby at a very young age, and she had chosen to go to the ALS schools because she wanted to complete her schooling that way. A couple of the other kids I talked to were 19, 20 years old, 21 years old, came from a high-poverty environments, and they were going to those schools, and the one thing that they all said that they loved about the school is, unbeknownst to probably most of you in this room, and I think unbeknownst to the reporter who wrote that story, those schools are open late at night, they're open 24 hours sometimes, and they could go there after they got off work and go there at 9 o'clock at night, 9:30 at night, and do their coursework and work on completing and getting their diploma. If you ever come to a graduation that I'm speaking at, I say to every kid at that graduation that we live in a great country, with great freedoms, where every dream is possible, but the one thing every dream requires is an education. And that education, that piece of paper we call a high school diploma, simply keeps doors open to a future for that child. The graduation rate of Sunshine Charter School is 25%. Is that high? No. But if that 25% of kids is 25% of kids who would have dropped out otherwise and ended up in a GED program at 25 or 30 or never gone back to school, because statistically speaking, we know most people who drop out and don't go back within the first three, four years, never go back, ever, and they end up the rest of their life not having a high school diploma. That's 25% of those kids who now have a high school diploma that can enter the military, by the way, something you can't do nowadays without a high school diploma, that can matriculate in a community college or a state university, or that can go on to one of our CTE schools and start with that high school diploma and have a future. So I'm proud of these schools, I'm not even hesitant about renewing this charter. We will follow up on whether there are assemblies held and students are told whether they have to go to those schools, because that is a very serious charge that's been leveled, and if that's going on, I would ask the superintendent to put immediate halt to that practice, but I suspect the superintendent has already done that. And if there are folks out there who feel like they have been forced into an ALS school, I take every call, I meet with anybody who wants to meet with me, pick up the phone, call me, I'd love to sit down and talk to them, I'd love to talk to their parents, and we will thoroughly investigate that, because any student who's given that option has a right to say, "No, I'm not going to go there. I want to stay in my traditional high school." And if that's being violated, that is something we would take very seriously. So that's why I'm voting for this, and let me turn it over to you, Mrs. Robinson.
I too will be voting in favor of this tonight, because I have four personal experiences myself with ALS schools. Some as simple as a lady that's at the location where I get my haircut, she's not my actual hairdresser, but she works there. She came to me one day, because she knows what I do, and she said, "My grandson dropped out of school, but before he turns 21, I understand he can go back to school. What does he do?" So he went to an ALS school, and it was a wonderful place for him to go and retrieve his credits, and he got his high school diploma that way. That one was a really brief one. Then another really good friend that I know through business, she had a situation where her nephew moved down here to live with her. Family up north was not, things weren't going well, and so he came here, didn't do well with the transition, didn't do well moving away from his family and all that, got into the traditional high school, started in ninth grade, and had been a good student and was doing well prior to that. But of course, very quickly, things weren't going well. He found himself getting further and further and further behind. By the time he got to his junior year, beginning of his junior year, they realized he wasn't doing any of his work, he wasn't passing anything, he didn't have enough credits, he was not going to graduate. She too called me, knowing what I do, and I said, "Well, there's credit recovery options." And she went, and they looked, and he followed in, up, he went to one of these ALS schools, he got his high school diploma, he actually got it quicker, because he could do it on his own timeframe. He got it quicker than the kids in his actual graduating cohort, which was an exciting thing, and he was able to then go on and get a job. And then I have two other situations, one much closer to home. One is one of my very dearest friends. Husband is a pharmacist, she's a financial advisor, so they're not from poverty, and their son, for whatever reason, brilliant kid, just decided in 10th grade that school wasn't for him. wasn't for him. Decided, you know, "I'm going to sit in school, but I'm not going to do my work." Wasn't getting into trouble in any other way, just decided, "I'm going to go to class, but I'm not going to do my homework, I'm not going to study for tests." No matter what they did for him as parents, nothing they tried was working. Once again, got to junior year, realized he's not going to graduate from high school in this traditional setting, it's just not going to work for him, and it wasn't working. Going to school wasn't working for him. And he was given the opportunity to go, they gave him lots of opportunities, they chose an ALS school. It actually didn't even work for him. So he did go. So not every, ALS is not for every child either. He went, but because he was not motivated to do his work, and he had the support, and his mother actually loved the setting and loved the working with the teachers, because he was still under 18, so she could interact with the faculty. But he, for whatever reason, it just didn't even work for him. He ended up, because he did like the virtual aspect of it, he ended up coming back into our system with OCVS, Orange County Virtual, and he did graduate with a diploma from Orange County Virtual School. So he did actually get his high school diploma in a completely different setting. And then the one that's most personal to me is my sweet young man that I've been mentoring since he was nine years old, he's now 19, who will be 20 this month in March. We have, he has had support from my family, my husband and I, and all my children, his mother, his grandmother, every teacher, principal, coach, all of my friends. He's had so many people in his life loving him, caring for him, mentoring him, and he has always struggled in school. School is not his strongest suit, but he was willing to do the work as long as we stayed on top of him. And we kept him going, going, going. He was one of those children that 10th grade came along, took the FSA and did not pass the ELA portion of the FSA, did not pass the Algebra I exam. So we keep plugging along, he still keeps doing his part in school, getting his grades. He was a wonderful athlete. And he eventually passed, thank goodness, the alternative assessment that has a Concord Score for the ELA portion, so we had that out from under us. And then when there's the PERC test you can take for math, and he's plugging along, and he started acting out and got into trouble with the law. First time, you know, you're a juvenile, it's not that, it's serious, but it's not as serious. Well, eventually, once he turned 18, because he was already a year older, you can't just go to juvie and get out. And he had to serve time his senior year, and we weren't sure how long it was going to be before he got out. And it was middle of our wonderful season of our sport that he played, and unfortunately, he got out three weeks before school was out, and he couldn't graduate because he had spent the whole second semester away from school. And when you go to big people jail, there's no school. Once you're over 18, there's no schooling for you, so he wasn't getting his schoolwork completed there. So he went to an ALS school and with hopes of getting his degree, and he's still there working on it. So we're still actively working on it. It's going to be a big day when he gets his diploma, we're very excited about it. So I realize there's so many different reasons that these ALS schools exist and are there to meet people at their time of need, whatever that time of need is. It can be anything. And so I will be voting for it tonight, and I do want to always make sure that our school choice department investigates and determines that they aren't just pushing the students through and telling them to go take their GED. I do want to make sure that they are. But every campus that I've been on, every person that I know that's actively been there has been very pleased with the support and the education that they receive there, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. Dr. Jenkins, I saw you had punched your button while she was speaking.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of notes. Actually, I would remind the board, as you're well aware, but for the information of anyone listening, that Florida statutes govern the approval of charters and then the extension of those charter approvals, pretty clear on reasons why boards can deny either the initial approval or the extension of charter. I think that's important for listening public to understand. Secondly, all of our children are counted in our graduation numbers, and so if they go to, we can't just shove them under the rug because they would still count against us. And so Orange County is very proud that we both increased our traditional high school graduation rates by 2.6%. But very telling is the fact that our overall graduation rate, which would include ALS and others, rose at a rate of 3.7%. And so we're very proud of that to 81.3%. But I think the more important notion is, and the chairman already alluded to it, I almost took my button off, those students who graduate from any alternative setting are children that would have been counted as purely dropouts, and we cannot afford not to provide every possible means for our students to achieve a high school diploma. It's a gateway that will impact the rest of their lives. And so I believe, as your CEO, that we have to offer choices to parents and to families. Mr. Jackson's mother gave a wonderful testimony, we have to have options because we need students to get their high school diploma, it has such an impact. And rather than debate or go through particulars on the details, I would invite anyone who's interested to look at our Facebook page where we have some very specific information provided for anyone who'd like to hear our side of that story.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins.
I'm sorry, Chairman, they're going to kill me for forgetting one more point, because I got on them for forgetting it. So if we weren't interested in our children graduating, we wouldn't have an annual event where we go out into the community. Every high school is open, we go on Facebook, we go on Twitter this year, social media really got things rolling for us, to get back any students who have not shown up. We call it expectation graduation. We have volunteers, social workers, guidance counselors, principals, administrators, area superintendents, all of my administrative cabinet working to bring back any students who are missing. And so I would just submit to you and assure anyone, this board and this administration care about our students so much so that we go back and retrieve and try to gather in any student who's trying to drop out. Because we feel like we have enough options through virtual school, through an alternative school setting, through alternate hours. We feel like we have enough options through our Orange Technical College that we can get children over that hurdle because a high school diploma is just paramount to their future.
Thank you, Ms. Covert.
So I'll just begin with saying that my first and foremost obligation is to every single student in our system, and to do best by every single student and to use any means necessary to serve them and help them be successful. You know, I have, I make decisions with real information, with research, and going to see for myself. So when you read things, there are different sides to every story. So I have been to visit ALS schools, Sunshine, Schiller, Chancery, and Aloma, I attend their graduations every year. And one of the things that's really neat about their graduations, you know, those students come up and speak, and half of them cry through their speeches because they didn't think they would be there. And it's very powerful. It's also very powerful to attend these schools in person. I'm going to applaud the parents and teachers who have come to speak here tonight because you obviously are very concerned about these students. So what I would ask you to do is go and tour these schools yourselves, I can set that up for you. I've spent a great deal of time with the administrators, the people who run these schools, principals. I've been there and seen it for myself and spoken to the students, and I would ask you to get the rest of the story and your information directly from those teachers, students, and administrators inside those schools, because it paints a very different story. I just want to say one thing about the GED option. We have to offer our students absolutely every option to be successful. And I don't think that that's such an awful option. My own niece was falling behind, severe learning disability, falling behind in high school, presented with all the wide variety of options. She chose to leave and get her GED, and then immediately enrolled in Valencia Community College, college student. So we have to look at every option because every student is different, and we have to find every means possible to help them, and I believe in my heart that that's what we're doing. The questions that I would ask that perhaps Superintendent, we could have a presentation at a work session, would be, what interventions do we have, because I know they're out there, just like our social workers talked about, the ASAP program in middle school for students who are not attending school regularly. What interventions do we have and do we use with our students, beginning in middle school when they could be falling behind? And then what are the wide variety of options for our students where our traditional schools maybe are just not working for them? I know that we have our own alternative schools, there are a wide variety of charter schools available. I'd like to hear more about, as you alluded to, the presentation process. How do we sit down, the student, the parent, the social worker, the guidance counselor, the career counselor, everyone in the same room, and say, "Here's where we're at, here are the wide variety of options, let's make the decision in the best interest of this child and each and every child." So I'd like to learn more about those options, those interventions in a presentation so that we ensure we're doing everything possible by any means possible to make every student successful.
Thank you, Ms. Covert. We'll tee that meeting up. Ms. Cadel.
Well, when I first turned on my light, I was going to ask the questions that the superintendent answered about what our role is in the renewal of charter schools, and she did a really good job of explaining that. So you all have been very eloquent, and I would like to address my comments to Mr. Jackson and his mom. Kudos to both of you. You know, we're reading a book right now called Grit, and it talks about perseverance and not giving up. And a lot of times, people who work really, really hard end up going and being the leaders of this nation because they didn't give up, and they found that inner fortitude to say, "I'm not going to give up. I am going to win," or "I am going to beat this." And, you know, as board members, we get to go to high school graduations in May and June, and we shake a lot of hands, and we hear great stories of children who have fit into our traditional high schools and who have graduated in four years. But one of the most exciting things we do is go to rainbow graduation, and those are our children who didn't get it done in four years, they got it done in four and a half years. And Mr. Jackson, when you talked about everyone being there for your graduation, our rainbow graduations, that's when mom, dad, grandma, aunt, and uncle, anybody who ever mentored them are there, and it's such a great celebration because the children who are there, they have really buckled down and they have worked hard. So don't shortchange anything that you've done. Life doesn't always go the way we expect it to go, and the lessons that you have learned in your 23 years, I am sure are going to carry you for years and years to come. So thank you for coming and sharing your story of how you overcame, and to your mom, thank you for never giving up on him and knowing that it was down in there.
Thank you. Mrs. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm not going to sit up here tonight and toot anybody's horn about a charter school because I still don't believe they have it right, and as far as Tallahassee is concerned, and until they get it right, I will not be tooting any horns for anyone, but I will be ethically and legally following the law. And based on this tonight, Mr. Eric, with you, we did talk about 100 minutes, I think, late in the evening, you owe me big time, okay, because you kept me away from a lot of stuff, but it was important enough for me to listen to you, and I learned a lot. One thing that you did say that I do want to correct tonight, we do not make anybody go to a charter school. And I think that you heard the chairman and the superintendent say it, and I wanted to make it perfectly clear before you leave there tonight that we're not kicking our kids out, I know not in my district, to make them go anywhere. I am a public school advocate, but I also believe my constitutional rights and my judiciary rights that I have as an elected school board member, constitution officers, that I must follow the law. And the law of the state is that we have charter schools. Our job is not to sing their praises up here, I'm just shocked, I'm being honest, about the number of us have brought out cases, and it's okay. But I feel if you bring out case for one charter school, you need to bring out cases for Lake Eola and all the others that have been functioning and doing extremely well. We have an Office of Schools Choice Services. They assist us in increasing awareness among parents and other community members about the voluntary public school choice option. It's going to get even more. I don't want to say worse, but because of the election appointment, I should say, Betsy DeBoss, it's going to be more. I want to make sure that this board governs themselves and following the law, and that our goal is to provide service and assistance needed to help children receive the education that best meets their needs. I would love to keep all the kids in public school, but as a teacher, I know that that's impossible. I too myself work in an alternative school, and I've worked in an alternative school for many years. I've seen the function of the charter schools in my district, and yes, I've been to the graduations, I'm not going to rave over them, but I'm impressed that they graduated. I'm impressed that the graduation rate is over 1%. To me, that helped one child. The bottom line are the children. We have home education, we have the magnet programs, we have school-age services, after-school programs, the teen parent programs, we have the virtual programs. These are what we call choice. And what I expect the superintendent and this board to do is to make sure that we are following the law under Dr. Christopher Bernier, Associate Superintendent for School Choice, that we follow it to a T. Tonight, no, I'm not overwhelmed about the greatness of any charter school because I would prefer it being an Orange County public school. Why? Because of the money. We have more students in the public school than they do in the charter school. But yet, our funds, and not our funds, the taxpayers' fund, is being divided even though parents have a choice. So they say, "I have a choice, and my tax money, I want my tax money to go here, I want my tax money to go here." I really feel that this needs to be fixed, and it needs to be fixed in Tallahassee. Now it's going to get, I don't want to say worse, but now it's on the national level, and the goal is not public education. The goal right now is charter education. One group, one county, and I don't know if that's constitutionally right, and I need to check with the general counsel at the end of the table, but they voted to go all charter. I hope that that never happens in Orange County because the parents will no longer have the choice. It will be mandated, and that's the type of unethical rulings that I hate and I will not support as a board member. So I want to say to you tonight, when our staff brings us information, and there is no violation of state law, whether they copy the app or not, and I've read off to them, I'm very tough on charter schools. And I even read where they don't even erase the names, and I said, "Are you sure that this is your school on page 36? You have so-and-so charter's name." "Oh, we were just looking at theirs, we must have misplaced." But that's not for us to do. Our job is to see if they ethically meet the state guidelines. If they meet those guidelines, then this board has no choice. But I'm not going to sit up here tonight and praise the pawn of anybody other than the kids that are graduating. So I praise you that that was the place that your mother and you chose to graduate. Other kids are choosing other things. The biggest thing is that this school board, being the fourth-largest school board in the nation, that we actually, the 10th largest in the nation, my bad, and the fourth, okay, in Florida, that we do what we're supposed to do as elected board members to see that the children get the choice that they want. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Miss Gold.
Well, much of what I wanted to say has been said, but I would like to put some perspective. There was a couple of th- There was a couple of things. I've had some discussions with Eric, and we're scheduled to do some more. And certainly, the article that was referred to was extremely disturbing. But as many of the board members have pointed out here, that is only a portion of the story. So there's one thing I want to say, though, to that is, to put in perspective, 203,000 Orange County public school students. Sunshine alone has 446. That's .0002%. But if they can help to graduate any, and hopefully all, of that .0002%, that is what we want to achieve. And we want to achieve that through choices because every child is different. I don't want to remove any tool that we think may work from our toolbox at any time unless we have something we think is far better to replace it with. We had about 2,500 students that did not graduate in the traditional way last year. They may never have graduated had they not had every option that is available to them now. Do we need to continue to work to improve the system? Of course we do. But to paint a picture that our children are being forced out and not being given any opportunity to graduate is just not what I've experienced in the four and a half years that I've been on the board now. You know, many of you may know the starfish story. There's someone throwing a starfish on the beach. It's full of starfish. There's thousands of starfish, and they're throwing. And somebody walks by and says to the young man that's throwing the starfish, what are you doing? You can't possibly save all these starfish. But he says, I saved that one, and I saved that one, and I saved that one. And the more we can do that, the more starfish we will save, and the success of our children is the most important thing we have to do up here today. I will not even address the, I think Mr. Rodriguez addressed the campaign contributions and the perspective of that in a very large campaign. But our first obligation, all of ours, as constitutional officers, and when we take that oath, is to the students of Orange County and to the community that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gould. Ms. Moore.
I likewise don't want to go back over some of the ground that we've already traveled here. I agree with everything my colleagues have said. Two points that might be just a little bit different. I had a number of years ago, probably about four years ago, had had ALS investigated because I had some parents who came to me and were concerned that they were being pushed out. And this was several years ago. And it was thoroughly investigated, and there were systems put in place to be sure that every child had the opportunity to go into the setting that best met their needs. And so to me, this was already been answered and addressed, and it had been taken care of. And secondly, I know two ladies very, very well, good friends, that work for ALS. And I hear about them. They're in Sunday School with me, and I'm very well aware of the long hours and the dedication. And when I've visited the schools, it's difficult. I think we get a little more used to, you know, having terrible things said about us, and it just comes with the job. But I do have some compassion for the employees at ALS, who I know they work long, long hours, and they know that it's the last chance, the last place for many of these students. And so I think that hasn't been said as much as it could have been, the dedication of many of the employees. And like I said, I know that firsthand from several of my friends. So I also will be supporting the motion to renew the charter for the company today.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, since I'm the last one to speak. But I support their renewal. You know, I understand there's some caveats within the contract. They have to increase their graduation by a certain percentage each year. So, you know, there is a lot of accountability. I, early on in my school board career, I visited chancery. I think Dr. Lawson and I went. And as much as I sort of went in there with a little bit of an attitude, I couldn't help but be impressed with their mission and how they were reaching these students. And I talked to two of my high school principals, and anecdotally, they say, we try to stay in touch with the students that we know that are there. Some come back into, you know, back into school. They've caught up, they graduate. You know, I mean, it's different for each child, but there certainly is, I didn't perceive a just washing of the hands. And I, too, have a couple of people who have told me, you know, their child just didn't want to go to high school, didn't want to go to the regular high school, and this answered their needs. So I support it based on all the other reasons that have been said and from my own experience.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. All right, board members, I don't have anybody else queued up to speak. So at this time, can I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda? Or it's been moved by Ms. Moore to approve the consent agenda, and seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any further discussion or debate on that point? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show it adopted unanimously. And for anybody who may be watching at home or in the audience, that was a consent agenda item, so that means essentially that debate topic was approved. All right, board members, we are now on, we have four school namings to do. And the first one is 17.01. I'm going to turn it over to the Superintendent. I'm going to hand the chair to Vice Chair Coburn for a moment while I take a quick break to Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. Board members, as you're aware, we go through a process for bringing forward school names that your board policy provides. The board actually has authority to make final decisions, but each area superintendent involved will give you the information background regarding each school naming, starting with Dr. Diaz for opening of school site 21ME2 Relief School, opening in 2017-18. Dr. Diaz.
Okay, that's perfect right there. Good evening, board members, Dr. Jenkins, and members of the audience. It's an honor and a pleasure to present to you the naming of 21ME2 Relief School Resolution. Through a survey, suggestions were open to students, parents, and the communities that serve Avalon Middle School, Timber Lakes, Camelot, and Castle Creek Elementary Schools. The survey was open from February 8th through February 15th, 2017. The survey was provided to students, parents, faculty, staff at respective schools through school newsletters, and an email distribution list formed at the community meeting that was held on February 7th, 2017. Selections were limited to one person throughout the duration of the survey window. The top response was Timber Springs Middle School with 65%, followed by Timber Lakes Middle, 5%, Timber Creek Middle with 5%. Thank you.
Ms. Flynn, this is your school. Would you like to make a comment?
It is very much so. All of us, I think, will remember the controversy surrounding the building of this school and the particular location that it is. But honestly, we came through with a stronger product. We came through with relationships mended and strengthened. And I think you can tell by the 65% on the name that there's a very good consensus of what the name should be. So I've moved that school, 21ME2, to be named Timber Springs Middle School.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion is approved.
Thank you. Madam Chair, can I say one more thing? Principal Rick Cantrell is in the audience, so I'd like him to stand up, please. And one of our fighting parents out there, Angela Browning, and her two sons are out there. So if you want to, I want to thank you for your support. And I think one of those is Willy Wonka, right? So thank you. I think it's going to be a great school, along with all of our other wonderful schools that we have in CPS. And I also want to thank Dr. Diaz and the Superintendent's staff because there were times when it really felt sort of like, will we ever get it? But now we're here, and now we have a Timber Creek High, a Timber Springs Middle School, and a Timber Lakes Elementary. So we have all the water bodies. If we want to get the Career and Tech Center, we can maybe call it the Timber Lagoon or something, so.
Yes, you got it all.
One correction for the record. So I made the mistake. We had the motion and the second. There was no further discussion, but we did not vote. So all those in favor of naming the school Timber Springs Middle, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for holding down the fort, Ms. Coburn. Congratulations, Timber Springs Middle School. Look forward to hearing great things out of y'all. I know we will. All right. Let me give you the adult podium, Patty.
Oh, yeah? Okay. Maybe I'm a little bigger than you. Okay. Good evening, Chairman Sibley, Distinguished Board Members, and Superintendent Jenkins, along with members of the audience. I am here to present the naming resolution for 44E-SE-2 Relief School. Suggestions for the school name was open to students, parents, and the community that serves 44E-SE-2 Relief School. The survey was open from February 9th to February 17th, 2017. Notification to students and their parents was made through Connect Orange Messages, school newsletter, and email distribution list formed at the community meeting held on February 9th, 2017. The selections were limited to one per person throughout the duration of this survey window. The top responses were Lake Nona Elementary at 48%, Laureate Park Elementary at 47%, and Medical City Elementary at 5%.
All right. Board members, Flynn.
Thank you. This one wasn't quite the slam dunk, so I have a little bit of some background for it. The name Lake Nona Elementary, this is the third submission or desire to use it. And it was previously pulled from the other two elementary schools in the area due to it being attached to the actual development of Lake Nona. And there was, it was said it was trademarked or copyrighted. And so it was pulled back there. Lake Nona, as you know, is a very large development. We have North Lake Park Community School that's within the subdivision of North Lake Park, right? And now it's, and then there's Village Walk, and there's Laureate Park, and now they've even expanded west of Medical City. So it's very, very large. We did have the developer contact, and as you know, a developer doesn't pull the name. I mean, they don't give us the name. But they did give us a little bit to think about in regard to the name and its connection to the neighborhood. And I think it raised a valid point, but I want to be very open that I wasn't contacted personally, but we did check with them because of this copyrighted notion. So I don't know if the, Mr. Rodriguez wanted to address that anyway. I just want to be open that we were contacted by them.
Rodriguez.
Ms. Flynn, members of the board. So as part of our due diligence, when we became aware that Lake Nona was a possibility for the name, in the past, that has been the issue raised, that Lake Nona has some proprietary rights over the use of that name, or I guess Tavistock has proprietary rights to the use of the name Lake Nona. So we did contact their attorney, their general counsel. We also spoke with Rob Adams, who is Vice President of Tavistock. They did not give us anything in writing to say that they will be pursuing any kind of legal claim if we choose the name Lake Nona. But they did voice their strong concerns about some potential confusion over the use of the name Lake Nona, and they had expected and believed that the name would be Laureate Park. I did explain the public process and what that entails, but that it ultimately the decision of the board. And it was a close vote. So with that being said, that's our update in terms of contact with the developer and getting their feedback because we did want to confirm whether or not the use of the name Lake Nona would create a potential liability to have to defend.
And the spread between, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Again, I was not contacted, and they don't drive it, but they can make good points. There was just one person's suggestion that made the difference. But here's the thing, is it's such a large area. I think Laureate Park is more reflective of where that area is. And because of that, because it's just so large, because of that, I'm going to recommend that the school be named Laureate Park Elementary School. And that's the motion that I make.
Moved by Ms. Flynn, seconded by Mrs. Robinson. All right. What's that? Mrs. Gordon is a second as well. Thank you. Is there any further discussion or debate of that motion? All right, everybody understand if you vote aye, you're voting for Laureate Park as the name of this new elementary school. All right? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Show it adopted unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Principal Suzanne Workum is in the audience, so I wanted to have her stand, too. And thank you. It's great. I don't see anyone that I recognize from the parent base up there. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you for your leadership on this issue, Ms. Flynn.
We have two schools in the southeast, so this is the naming resolution for 52MSE-2 Relief. Suggestions for the school name was open to the students, parents, and communities that serve Lake Nona Middle School, Moss Park, and Sunblaze Elementary School. The survey was open from January 27th through February 6th, 2017. The survey was provided to students, parents, faculty, and staff at respective schools throughout the school newsletters, and email distribution lists formed from community meetings. Selections were limited to one per person throughout the duration of the survey window. The top response was Moss Park Middle at 34%, followed by Innovation Middle at 32%, and Lake Hart Middle at 20%.
Thank you, Dr. Fritzler. All right, we do have one speaker on this school, Mr. Brock Nicholas. Mr. Nicholas, welcome, sir. If you could start with your address, sir.
Brock Nicholas, 72, yes, exactly. 7250 Forum Drive, Suite 310. I just have a couple of things, please. Mr. Chairman, I just want to tell you who we are, thank your team, and give you some compliments on your staff, and then express our preference on the vote with all deference to the developer comments about my counterpart at Lake Nona. He's quite pleased, by the way. We're in our homes, and we're developing a community called Story Park. There's over 1,000 homes in the neighborhood. And as part of that, we are also extensively involved in delivering all of the surrounding infrastructure in the area. In fact, a particular intersection just south and west of this new school has been of particular discussion lately, and I'm sure it will continue to be. But as major stakeholders in the area, we felt it was important to come in and say hello. Thank you for the investment in our community. It's at the south end of Story Park. It's actually located on a street that formerly was named Innovation Way South and will continue to be that. And I also wanted to give you some compliments to the Superintendent on your staff, in particular, John Morrison, his group, Bassem and Tim Goh, and George Hack, of course Laura Kelly. And I had the honor of meeting Principal Hector, so welcome aboard as well. But great, great job with the team. It's been a pleasure working with those folks. They have been very tough negotiators on our project, but they're delivering a very quality school. And now just to express our vote again, you know, this area was known formerly as Innovation Place, and the land that we are developing now, in fact, was named Innovation Place. The road that the school is situated on, just to the south of this road, it's fronted by a road which in the future will be called Innovation Way South. I understand that Moss Park Elementary was a very close first in the voting at 34%, and the close second was 32% as the developer of Story Park. We were quite disappointed that Story Park did not make it into the top three. But I wanted to express my vote on behalf of my 250 associates throughout Orlando, many of whom have children who reside in the Orange County school districts, for the very close second, Innovation Middle School. And that's pretty much it. Also tell you that on my team, we work very late as well. I have 100 people in my office now waiting for me to get back. I have 100 people in my office now waiting for me to get back to close our quarter, and we do pizza when we work late. So, we would be happy, when this school opens, to sponsor a pizza event for faculty and parents. And we do a number of these things throughout our communities. In fact, we have another school site just down the road in Moss Park we'll be dedicating over the next couple of quarters. And we do pizza parties and teach-ins, and we have a Lenar Little Builders program we do. We come in and show the kids what it's about, to build communities and construct homes and do what we do. So that's it for me, and thank you so much for your cooperation, and most importantly, your access. Dara Flynn, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas, for coming and testifying tonight, and for waiting this long. Ms. Flynn.
Okay. So this one has its interesting sides, too. In addition to, I didn't get any emails, but we get the percentages here. But I did get an email from someone who said that they thought, basically, the name Moss Park sort of wasn't inclusive of the area. There's two elementary schools that will feed into this middle school. One is Sunblaze Elementary, which you will remember was not the first place name, and I didn't call it Randall Park because, or I didn't select that name because there were many different developments coming into it. And so, the same situation exists here. You have a Moss Park Elementary School, and then you have Sunblaze. So I don't want anyone to feel that there's turf, how did you say, turfdom? Turfdom. But here's the issue. There is, OCPS has an Innovations Charter Middle School. That would be confusing. Even though it's on different ends, that would be different. So, I brainstormed a little bit, and I thought about doing a hybrid, and I wanted to pass this around, of Innovation Park Middle School. So it sort of combines the park area with the innovation, because there is that overlay, you know, that whole area has sort of been annexed, and you know, the Innovation Way sort of quarter went from UCF all down to Medical City. And we do have the roads coming in Innovation Place, but I'm just thinking Innovation Place Middle School, the place, I don't know. It might just combine everybody. So, I think that's what I'd like to put forth, is Innovation Park. And I certainly appreciate Mr. Nichols' testimony there. So, and that is mainly to distinguish it from the middle school that's called Innovations, because I think there would be confusion with that on a regular basis. So what does everybody think? That's, make the motion. I make the motion that we call it Innovation Park Middle School.
All right, it's been moved by Ms. Flynn, and seconded by Ms. Cobert. Did it be named Innovation Park Middle School? Board Members, discussion, debate? Okay. We vote aye, you're voting in favor of Innovation Park Middle School. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Show it adopted. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I can't help but at least make a clarification, because you never know who might be staying up listening, and we like to always make very clear a couple of things. Number one, it is not a voting issue that takes place. It is a surveying of the school community. And that's why Ms. Flynn said earlier that she made clear, it was made clear to Lake Nona that developers don't name our schools. The board reserves that right. And the surveys are really for the school community stakeholder by policy. I just say that so folks who might be listening in, or who might have a school naming coming up, that they understand their survey is not voting, and it is of the school community stakeholders.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Flynn.
And thank you for that reminder. We have the principal for Innovation Park Middle School, Hector Maestra, if you want to stand too, I want to thank you. And I don't believe, other than the folks over here, that we have any parents. Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Gollit.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Sablette, members of the board, and Superintendent Jenkins. It is with great pleasure that I present to you the naming resolution for 131 PS8 SW5. A survey for the school name was open to stakeholders that will be served by PS8. Notification was sent to all students and parents regarding surveying that would take place at the community meeting on January 23rd, 2017. Students and their parents were notified of the meeting through a mail or invitation, Connect Orange Messages, and a printed invitation that was sent home with all students. Transportation was also provided for the community event. The recommendation form included the following options, and had the following responses. OCPS Academic Center for Excellence, 21 percent. OCPS Academic Center of Excellence, 5 percent. OCPS Academy of Excellence, 4 percent, and a write-in section. Thank you.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Gollit, so very much. And we do have Dr. Andrew Rollins in the audience. Okay, if you would please stand at this time. This is probably the last time you'll be called the PS8, okay? And I think Mr. Rosen will only be the only one that'll say it, but he'll have his little on the east, on the south side. I too, this, we received so many names, I think, ever since this school came about. I had been shoving the names through the door to Dr. Jenkins about the community and what they desire. But I spoke with the community and asked the community, for once in our life, all of the schools are being named after a community of some sort. You know, you just got there with the Lake Nona community, the Innovation Way. I mean, I could go on and on. Pine Hill, Washington Shores, don't even, Moss Park, Winter Park High. But there's nothing in the school system to identify any center of excellence that, when people come to Orange County, that they can actually identify with. Dr. Jenkins has appointed Dr. Andrews Rollins. Am I getting that right? Okay, 'cause sometimes I flip it, I'm so sorry. We're just learning each other, okay? But she has appointed him to lead the way with that, and Dr. Gollit. And after much consideration, and even speaking with the parents, they did want the Paramore in there, and I want to bring that up. Several names came up, but there were already names of people that already had names on buildings within the Orange County. But there is not one building in Orange County that we can identify as a center of excellence for Orange County Public Schools. And with the school being placed on Amelia, and on Paramore, and Westmoreland, in a predominantly African-American community, I have no idea. My community feels that it would not be that way for long, so I don't know if that's good news, I don't know if it's bad news, but I am counting on the mayor of Orlando and the Two County African-American Commissioners to be fair, and not to actually zone these students out of their community. This is very important to us, because these students have been bused for many, many years out of their communities to so many different schools. And when the principals come before this board, they constantly tell us that they are more of a liability to that particular school than an asset. So, I think now, with the building of this school, and the making of the school, and the curriculum and richness the board has been working with the superintendent in, I feel that with all that in mind, I'm recommending, and I move, that the OCPS Academic Center for Excellence, which will be called OCPS8, be the name that we govern ourselves by within this new historical legacy that we are creating in Orange County Public Schools. Also, it'll be a little different from all of the other schools. Our names are on the cornerstone, for those board members that started off this project and was working with Mr. Morris. But I'm asking the superintendent and this board approval that we also have a founding school board, and that the pictures of this particular school board, and the previous ones that are no longer here, be placed in this school as a remembrance of their hard work and dedication for what they have done for this community to bring these students together. So with that in mind, Mr. Chairman, OCPS Academic Center for Excellence, OCPS8 is the name that we have chosen.
And is there a motion to adopt that, Ms. Gordon, by you?
Yes.
Yes, it's been moved by Mrs. Gordon. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Vice Chair Cobert and Ms. Gould. Is there any debate or discussion of that motion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Show it adopted. All right, board members, we are now on, Dr. Rollins, good luck.
Congratulations.
My children had the distinct benefit of being students at Blenken when Dr. Rollins was a assistant principal there, and they still pine for him and want to get him back. So, the children of the East School are certainly blessed to have you as their principal, Dr. Rollins. All right, let's wrap up then. Board Members, we are now on information, a report by the superintendent. Dr. Jenkins.
Mr. Chairman, I ceded my time to the Black History speakers earlier. No report.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez, general counsel's report.
No report, Mr. Chair.
We do have some committee reports. Budget, Ms. Cadel.
Yes, we held our first budget committee meeting on February the 21st. There are two more meetings scheduled, one on April the 18th, and the final meeting will be on May 16th. And I believe that you all got paperwork of the budget requests from both CTA and OESPA the day after it. And if you don't mind, I'm just going to read these into the record. From CTA, it says, "Orange CTA strongly urges OCPS school board members to prioritize the following for the 2017-18 fiscal year. Number one, teacher salaries, especially mid-career teachers. Two, significant increases to supplements. Three, maintaining and expanding healthcare benefits that will establish OCPS as the employer of choice for excellent teachers throughout Central Florida. Four, additional financial resources to strengthen and expand paid time dedicated to individual teacher planning. Five, professional development during the summer should be paid at a teacher's hourly rate. Six, OCPS should fund and support a mentoring program on paid time by more senior teachers for early career educators entering the profession." From OESPA, "OESPA strongly urges OCPS school board members to prioritize the following for the 2017-18 fiscal year. One, classified employee salaries, especially bus drivers, custodians, and ESE paraprofessionals. Two, maintaining and expanding healthcare benefits that will establish OCPS as the employer of choice for excellent classified employees throughout the Central Florida area. Three, creation of a civil service system for promotional and managerial opportunities within OCPS. And four, additional financial resources to strengthen and expand paid time dedicated to skills development for promotional opportunities within OCPS." Chief Financial Officer Dale Kelly did a really good job of kind of giving an overview of what we're hearing coming out of Tallahassee as far as funding. The number one thing, discussion item that kept coming up, there still is, let me think of how to say it, our reserve balance is a concern that we carry from the unions, from both unions. They feel like we carry too large of a fund balance reserve. We have asked that Mr. Kelly come back to us and kind of talk about how we get that fund balance reserve, why it is where it is. And the other thing we talked about at length is the fact that if you use nonrecurring dollars to fund recurring expenses, we're going to end up in a financial mess. And so, you know, we talked a little bit about why you can give a bonus versus pay increases, those type of things, how we were able to pay for professional development one year, because we had used some of those nonrecurring funds. So, we have asked Mr. Kelly to come back to us in April to kind of explain why the fund balance is what it is, and how it becomes what it is. So, that was, you know, that was the first meeting. The way this is set up, it's two representatives of the superintendent, two representatives of OESPA, two representatives of CTA, and two representatives of the school board. And it is in the contract with our employees that we do have this budget committee.
That was very enlightening, Ms. Cadel, and thank you for serving as our representative steadfastly these last five years.
And Mrs. Moore is our second rep.
Mrs. Robinson. Was it on this topic or a different topic? Okay. Okay, we have one other, any, is, Mrs. Gordon, is it on this topic or a different topic?
No, it's a different topic.
Okay, well, let me go to our next committee report, and then we'll get through the board member issues. Legislative Committee, Ms. Flynn.
Okay, thank you. You know, there's a lot of stuff happening in committee. The legislature is on recess right now until, between committee meeting and when it starts. I think it's March 7th, 9th.
A week from today.
Okay, a week from today. So, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on with new rules for financial disclosure, raising the capital funding, a millage. The reports that come from Cody Woody and Eileen Fernandez, our liaisons with our legislators, please read them, you know, just so much information, it's hard to give it right here. We do have a revised letter to the president and speaker on the performance pay. I think there are slots for all of us to sign. If you can read it before you go and sign it, so then we can at least get it delivered to Senator Simmons while he's on break, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Oh, you have it? Okay. You know, the other thing, too, is we really look a lot on the state level, because certainly that's been what's, you know, changed a lot for us in the past few years. But now, on the federal level, there are certainly some bills being filed. I think it's HR 610 that deals with the title grants coming to the state, that they might be turned into a block grant, they might do portability where they follow the student. Instead of giving a general sum, there's talk about reducing the requirements on the free and reduced lunch nutrition standard. So, I certainly think we do need to look and follow closely the federal legislation that's being filed, and especially in light of the change of administration. There could be some changes that affect us.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn, as always, for leading up our efforts in this arena. Board Members, I'm going to pass down the letter, if you could sign it. Before you leave, please don't leave without signing it, so we can get it to Mr. Gollit. All right, we are now on issues of general discussion by the board. Mrs. Robinson.
Dr. Jenkins, I wanted to follow up on some of the discussion from the public comment portion earlier tonight about that we've now started our FSA testing season, and I wanted to just ask you, do you, as a superintendent, send out any type of comments or directives to our schools regarding how the schools are supposed to handle students who choose to opt out?
And I believe the speaker said something about a notice being sent out. What we provided to schools is what general counsel actually constructed for us last year. There'll be an updated version of that, different dates and so forth on that document, but we provide something that has all of our legal standing around opt-out to schools, so that they can provide so that they can provide it to a parent who asks about opting out. We do not have a, an email or a message that goes out to all parents that was provided by legal counsel, and it goes to those parents who ask questions about it.
I was actually referring to not, not to our parents, but to our faculty, how our faculty handles it when a child says they're going to opt out.
Yeah, none of that has changed either. We can certainly give you copies of that. It's what we've done.
So you're saying we do have something that we send to our faculty?
It doesn't go to all faculty, it goes to principals, but that's, I don't believe, Dr. Jarra, I don't believe anything has gone out this year. It's been the same since last year.
I can't see.
Correct.
Nothing's gone out this year. I'll give you what they were provided last year.
Right, and do you know, possibly Dr. Jarra, since it, does it come from Dr. Jarra?
Yes.
Does it tell them how, what, what the standard procedure is if a student, what we as OCPS staff should do? Should a student choose to opt out?
Yes, for example, we don't have provisions that students take out books to read, et cetera, because that is disruptive to the testing environment. They are directed around those requirements per DOE.
Okay, to, to just follow up, I want to make sure that we do not support a staff member or a monitor or anyone in the, in the testing process telling a student who says, "I'm opting out, I'm not taking the test." We don't tell them, "You have to take the test," after they've told us that.
No, no.
And we don't stand over their shoulder and glare at them and do it anyway. We do not condone anyone bullying a student.
We don't condone, and I've never heard any such stories actually come to my office.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure that that came from you, and I agree with you. And I just want to let families know, since we are starting the testing process, that should you have a child, your child have a problem, contact us. We do want to all hear about it, and we can't follow up on it if we don't hear about it. So should you have concerns, make sure you reach out to us. That's it.
Anybody else on that topic? You know, I do want to say, and I want to make sure I couch this correctly because I am by no means disagreeing with Mrs. Robinson at all, I'm truly not Mrs. Robinson. But I also want to say, we have 203,000 students in Orange County Public Schools, and we have a small handful that choose to opt out. So as a parent myself with three children who have to sit through standardized testing, I just feel compelled to also say, we don't want any student at the behest of their parents is choosing to opt out to disrupt the testing environment for that 99.999% of students who are complying with the state statutes. And I don't think we have a ruling from the appellate court yet, do we, Mr. Rodriguez?
No, but we had a great oral argument.
We did, and I was very encouraged by the comments of the appellate judges who are harshly critical of, at least if you listen to their comments from the bench, of those families that were encouraging their students in an act of civil disobedience to not take what is a state-required test. So, you know, that's something that, and this is a divisive topic among many in education, but I just, I do feel compelled to say that. I certainly want to accommodate those students. They certainly deserve to be escorted from the classroom and put into an environment where they can sit quietly during the rest of the day. But by the same token, we do not, I do not condone, I do not condone those students disrupting the testing environment for the other 23, 24 kids in that class who are taking the state-mandated exam. Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concern was that I did receive calls in reference to my community, but I think I would like to see the superintendent wanted to, since this is our first board meeting, since that announcement went out, in reference to what was happening at Sadler Elementary, and also in reference to the Congress of the United States House of Representatives, the letter that we all received from Darren Soto. I wish that we would address that so they can know what our stand is because I think people are thinking that the local personnel's not make immigration status inquiry. But I think we have rules and regulation on that, and we could address it. But that did not happen, and I think you heard Kathy Marsh explicitly cleared it up for the children at Sadler because they were very upset, and parents were upset, and thought that they were inquiring about the immigration status of these students. And from what I'm understanding, and I need clarification tonight from the superintendent and legal counsel on it, where do we stand with that, and in reference to the letter coming from you as Congressman Darren Soto?
Before I turn it over to Mr. Rodriguez, let me also say, Mrs. Gordon, in response to that, that I have asked Dr. Jenkins and Mr. Rodriguez to help us craft a response to Congressman Soto's letter. I went to them rather than craft a response myself because I want to make sure that we are completely factually correct in what we are saying. But let me turn it over to you, Dr. Jenkins and Mr. Rodriguez.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Ms. Gordon, so our office actually, we reached out to Congressman Soto's office just today. Eileen Fernandez, who's been monitoring these issues, in part because of her duties as our, one of our lobbyists, but also as my Associate General Counsel. And so we went through the fine points of the letter, and more importantly, just helped educate them that we do not partake in some of the activities that they are concerned about, namely, that we would have employees or others that are going to embarrass or otherwise harass our students. We do not ask on questions when they register to school whether or not they are, you know, we asked, I believe, the citizenship question, but we don't, I don't think we ask their immigration status or any of those types of questions. So quite frankly, this is an issue, as I explained to a group this week, as we spoke on this issue last week, I should say. I strongly suspect, board members, that this issue will come to light and fruition in a legal challenge of some sort. I'm just hoping and praying it is not in Orange County because you all well know, every time we have these challenges, it ends up costing the public taxpayers and their coffers. So my hope and expectation is, is that when the challenges arise in whatever jurisdiction that is, that a court dispense with these issues, and that we get some further resolution on the duties and responsibilities of immigration and, you know, the safe havens that our schools are supposed to be. So we did address all those with Congressman Soto's office, and he, their office did not request a written response, and they know that the lines of communication are there, they have any follow-up questions.
Thank you very much, head of superintendent and General Counsel. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Ms. Moore.
It's interesting, I pushed my button not knowing what you were going to talk about, Mrs. Gordon, but I want to add to your, to your Sadler because when I saw the list the other day, I said, "Oh, there's only one school that's not mine, it's Mrs. Gordon's at Sadler." So it's my babies up there at level, particularly at Poppy Elementary, Dream Lake, Zellwood, Dillard Street, Okowi Elementary, and Spring Lake. So I'm glad you care because I said, "Oh, I have a lot of the schools with, with our children whose parents probably aren't documented." Sitting here tonight, there looks like we're seeing a little bit of potential shift in this issue. And so, Mr. Chairman, the reason I actually pushed my button was just to have us on call for any kind of work session if we see any major policy changes coming out of Washington, and that we, on short notice, could start, and I don't think it's so much of a response. It's what, because we, you mentioned it earlier. There's anything we can do about any of that, but we can be prepared as best we can because we love children. We care about children in Orange County. So I just wanted to request particularly with seeing some legislation. I had to make a teary-eyed call to Mrs. Colbert on Sunday after reading a couple bills coming out of Washington that appeared as if we were going to eliminate funding for Title I and all the titles in favor of vouchers. I, but there's three or four bills up there. We have no idea what's going to happen at this point. So I just wanted us to be ready, not again to critique and criticize because it's really, but to prepare best we can to protect our children.
Yeah, my commitment, well, we have plenty of work session space available if we need to get together quickly to address anything. Okay. Ms. Gould.
I just wanted to remind everyone that this Saturday is the Hall of Fame for Orange County Public Schools and the Foundation for Orange County Public Schools. It is our great event where we celebrate graduates that have reached some notoriety and administrators who have, and contributors to our school system that have left a great legacy. And I look forward to seeing you all there to celebrate.
Thank you for reminding us of that. Hopefully, that's on everybody's calendar. If not, you know, board members, I think it's looking like a packed house again for that. Mrs. Robinson.
I just wanted to follow up on my comments from earlier. I, too, do not anticipate that any family or any student that is choosing to opt out, I do not want them to disrupt the testing environment. That's not my desire in this. In my comments from earlier and my, my questions of the superintendent, I do just want that if a family and a child has, has made a decision to opt out, that we treat them with respect, and that we, we don't, we, there's no pressure from anyone that they must participate. If they're choosing to make that choi, to do that, they're choosing the consequences that come with that choice. And sometimes the consequences might not be good if they happen to be in third grade. So anyway, I'm just, I just wanted to suggest that I don't want the other children jeopardized either. I just want to make sure that when a family and a child has made that decision, we do not bully them, that we respect their decision.
Thank you. Ms. Cadel.
Somewhere down the road, you know, not immediately. But can we get an update on how the portfolios are going? What, what the feedback is we're getting from the third-grade teachers on our, on our, I guess, process so that we are building these portfolios all year long? So I'd, I'd love to get an update of what the teachers are saying. How could we make it better, or is it really good, that type? Update, please.
Yeah, it's an excellent suggestion. So we'll add that to the lineup, and also, if you could, Dr. Jenkins, whether it's a strategic plan update, I know you made a note of it earlier, or whether it's an actual work session, the request earlier on, oh, I'm tired, I'm drawing a blank right now, on our at-risk high school student options and how they're advised of their options. Okay? All right, board members, I just handed out the work session schedule. We have one next Tuesday, a whole bevy of board policy updates, and then we have targeted technical rezoning. Please, I would beseech you, get into Mr. Morris or Dr. Jenkins, anything you want included in the facilities update, that's our bite at the apple of that each year, and I know that's an issue of intense interest to a lot of y'all. So if you want something covered, please, please let them know. Just as an informational item, I have a feeling most of you are still not going to be home. But if anybody's in town, the third college and career fair for our high school students is this Friday at the Amway Arena. So I'd love to have you stop by. Last year, I forgot to mention it, but it's really quite rewarding to see it if you, if you're back in town yet. It goes from roughly 9:30 or 10 o'clock till noon that day at the Amway Arena. I think you'll love it. It was, we try to grow it if you're back. And then lastly, you know, I'm a, I'm a policy geek, I know a bunch of y'all are as well. I read this article in the Wall Street Journal. I just had to copy it for you and show it to y'all if you, if you like these kind of things. The central thesis of this article is how the Chinese are sending their younger students to the U.S. to attend American schools because of the creativity and the innovation that their students get at American schools. It's a Wall Street Journal article. I thought it was absolutely fascinating. And I think sometimes, you know, we hear so much criticism of American public education when in fact we are still the destination of choice for most of the world, whether it's our universities or even our schools at the K-12 level. Lot, a lot of immigrants, including I've learned of late in our schools who come here during the school year and go back during the summer. Yep, yep, South American countries. So one of the things I will give you a foreshadowing of right now, the main theme of state of the schools this year is going to be changing the narrative. And changing the narrative, thinking about how we talk about our public schools. A lot of things have happened in the last year that have been said about our public schools are just factually inaccurate and flat-out wrong. But I think it starts with us changing that narrative and starting to get the facts straight about how we're doing in American public education. All right, anything else for the good of the order? Ms. Cadel. And Mrs. Robinson first, then Ms. Cadel.
I, I just noticed on the work session schedule that also, too, on the 7th, it looks like we have Pay for Performance as an actual work session. Is that going to be going over, remind me what that is, if I can remember the topic. If you can remind me exactly, are we going to be discussing the study that Mr. McKelvey, Dr. McKelvey did?
Yeah, I think so. Let me talk to Dr. Jenkins. I think we're going over the, the study that Dr. McKelvey did. It's a little bit horse out of the barn a little bit already because I think we've all read it, and, yeah.
Well, I think it's actually, I, when we got this date a long time ago, I actually sent it out to Wendy Dormall and Mark Mitchell and asked, told them, I mean, the day that we got this date. So she has it on her calendar, so I don't want to cut it. I would like us to have some open dialogue about it and give them a chance to come talk, too, since, um, so I just want to point that out, that Tuesday, May 7, um, March 7th is the, still the Pay for Performance work session. Thank you.
You know, if I could ask, you know, we have such tremendous union partners right now in a way that we might not have had in the past. So I'd like to just make sure they're aware of that's on our schedule. And we'll take public comment from them like we do at all work sessions. Okay? Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. Great point. Ms. Cadel.
You know, I've thought a lot about this, and I've had the conversation with Dr. Jarra on it. And, you know, we're talking so much about what Dr. Armbruster is doing in career and technical education. And I had a conversation at the table this morning with Marcia Goodwin from the city of Orlando. And the, the, the thing that I can't put my arms around in my mind is how, when you talk about changing the perception, we have moved to where we think all children go to college, and if you're not, you know, if you're not going to college, then maybe you're not quite as successful. But we have to figure out as parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles and that whole thing, how you encourage young people to work with their hands, if that's what they want to do. I mean, we need carpenters, we need plumbers, we need mechanics, you know, the list just goes on and on and on. And how do we, as those adults in the children's lives, say, you know, "It's okay to go ahead and explore being a carpenter, and then if you decide after you've been a carpenter for a while that you want to go to college and you want to go into project management or something like that, you know, those doors are open." So I just give that to you for food, for thought as you're talking about changing the perception of public school, that I think that's one of the things that we as a community and we as a society need to talk about is, you know, while college is very, very important, it's also very, very important for some of our children to be very skilled craftsmen. So I don't know where that sweet spot is, but it's something I think a lot about.
Great observation. Thank you for the suggestion. Ms. Flynn.
Just one more thing on that performance pay work session. When we were in the communications or legislative committee meeting, the idea was that we would have a public presentation of the study because we really haven't had it. So that was the reason, and as you said, to have our union reps there. So I just wanted to reiterate why we're doing it and present those letters, but mainly to have it in a public forum.
Mrs. Robinson.
I just wanted to follow up on Ms. Cadel's point, which is an excellent one. Recently, at a Central Florida Leadership Forum, it was wonderful to have the business community talking and in their forum and in their panel discussions discussing cradle-to-career for the first time in my eight years of going to the many business functions I attend. They, they were acknowledging that preschool, kids before they get to us in kindergarten, their education and everything from birth to kindergarten is just as important. And then also, to Ms. Cadel's point, career. Somewhere along the line, our country made it a negative for you to go into a career right after high school and to, to only see college as the option when there are so many wonderful careers out there that you can get a certification in some industries, and you can be making more with, in, industry certification than a child with a four-year college degree in, in your job. So I just want to point out that it's, it was So I just want to point out that it was really nice and several of the people in the panel discussed the importance of getting back to the basics of encouraging all of our children to just find a career. One path is college, one path could be CTE and certification. So I'm just so thankful that we're all having that discussion. So that's a perfect place for you to highlight some of those things when we're talking about the narrative. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm glad I foreshadowed it, so keep the suggestions coming. You know, I firmly believe that economic development begins and ends with a healthy public education system. And, you know, I just think we need to get our policymakers to realize that, so. All right, with that, we are adjourned.